Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 24th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order, and if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening again. If we could, Natty, if you would call the roll, please.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up is our Highlander Highlights, and tonight we're going to honor our TIES Exceptional Teacher Award. We have two of our teachers that were selected as statewide exceptional teachers. Highland Elementary School 5th Grade Teacher Regina Squoy. Did I say that right? And Columbia Academy Special Education Teacher Shannon Tuttle were recognized as 2016 TIES Exceptional Teachers at the 13th Annual TIES 2016 Educational Technology Conference on December 13th in Minneapolis. The TIES Exceptional Teacher Award recognizes teachers who use technology to positively impact student learning and model best practices in their classroom. And here to speak a little bit about that tonight are Xena and Brian.
Thank you Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's always an exciting time to be able to honor great teaching, especially great teaching with technology. So, I have a couple of things that I want to say about each person, and Xena has a couple additional things that we'll say, and then we'll end with, see if Regina wants, has anything to add. So, when we talk about the TIES Exceptional Teachers, again, it's that award at that winter conference, so there's over 3,000 people that they get to get up in front of, walk across the stage, and be honored. So, we're really focusing in on those leadership skills, innovation, integration of technology, evidence of strategies impacting student learning and engagement. So, those are coming in the core things. I want to start with Shannon Tuttle, who wasn't able to make it tonight. And she is an EL teacher at Columbia Academy since 2013, and I just want to kind of read a little bit of what we said about Shannon when we submitted her for the award. Special Ed? Special Ed teacher, sorry. Shannon has been transforming a classroom with technology by creating engaging experiences for students. She teaches Read 180, a specialized reading curriculum, which requires technology as one of the four components. Shannon integrates a variety of technology tools to ensure all of her students have access to real-world situations and are able to voice their opinions and ideas on each and every topic. Shannon is a master at implementing technology in a way that reflects a calm, quiet atmosphere in her classroom. Classroom is always incredibly calm and quiet. She is very comfortable with technology, and as a result, her students are not anxious at all using technology and are willing to try new applications along with her. She is a model for other teachers in our district, and that's what makes Mrs. Tuttle an innovative educator in Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Yeah, I'll just add that I helped with the induction program when Shannon Tuttle was our first brand-new teacher just a few years ago here in Columbia Heights, and helped her to learn and work through the curriculum that she's using, largely literacy-based curriculum with a large technology component. So, I have had the pleasure of spending quite a bit of time in Ms. Tuttle's classroom, and as Director Henneken's mentioned, it's a special place. The kids come in, and it's calming. She has a quiet authority about her. The kids have to transition to four different stations in her classroom, and they all are excited when they get to ring this quiet chimes, and that's the signal to move. But she just cares about each and every individual student and differentiates the instruction, and is able to really use the technology portion of her class to pull the reports and to see how the kids are progressing, and then have conversations with the other teachers, her colleagues, about what's best for each of her kids. So, it's just been a real pleasure working with Shannon Tuttle.
So, now on to Regina. Regina always keeps student learning at the forefront of any project she does, and is very purposeful in the use of technology that she uses in supporting that learning. She admirally walks into the depths of the unknowns with technology alongside with her students and utilizes her skills of critical thinking, collaboration, and inquiry to navigate with her students through new and old tasks alike. Always willing to try a new tool, Regina employs her curiosity and courage to bring her students' learning to the next level. And one of the example projects that she, where we have of that, her students create videos of their learning for conferences to show the parents. I think that's a great use of technology. It's exciting that the students can really showcase what they're learning in the classroom, going beyond just, "I got an A on the test," or "I got a B on the test." So, that's an amazing use of technology.
I've known Regina for almost 10 years now, if you can believe it, about 10 years, and starting out as an EL teacher in our district. Very strong supporting of our kids, and then she stepped up to the challenge to take on the full class as a classroom teacher, as a 5th Grade Teacher at Highland. And similar to what Director Henneken's just said, she's always willing and excited and will step forward to take on any new challenge. And so, when the Personalized Learning Initiative rolled into 5th Grade, she jumped at the chance and just openly, willingly implemented in her classroom. And it was, it's been very successful and a pleasure. And the fact that she's using it in such a way for family engagement, you can, it's very apparent when you walk down the hallway and you know which are Regina's kids' lockers, because they have, the parents have given messages to their kids, and they're outside of their lockers. So, really strong in family engagement and just all-around instruction. So, it's been so great, and we're just so proud of you and want to honor you. So, did you want to say a few words?
I just want to say, yeah, I try, I'll try anything once, and sometimes it works, and sometimes I need to call Matthew. So, good thing I have his cellphone number. But yeah, it's great to try, and thank you so much for the words, and thank you for recognizing me. I really appreciate it, and it's been fun. Every day is a adventure.
Stenwig said that she had Shannon Tuttle in the induction program. Regina was in the induction program when I was working on it. And she, it's just been a pleasure to see you grow. And the comment I was going to make is not only is she good in parent involvement, but she involves her own parent in the classroom on a daily basis. Her mother has given, I think, hundreds of volunteer hours working to support our learners over at Highland Elementary. So, I'm sure your mother is very proud of you tonight, and we want to thank you for also enlisting your mother in the learning of our children. Thank you Regina.
I'll pass it along.
If you'd come up Regina, I have a certificate for you. Brian, if you want to come up as well. Certificate as well for Shannon, she's not here. But the certificate, we've got to stand over this way, Casey. Regina is recognized for being named TIES Exceptional Teacher Award winner. Thank you for your dedication to the students, staff, and community of Columbia Heights Public School District. All right, we'll go ahead and move forward. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura, thank you.
Second.
Molly, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, January 31st, at 7:00 PM will be a school board governance training here in the community room. February 14th, at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. February 20th, no school, the district office is closed. February 21st, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, will be a school board listening session. Also, the 21st, at 5:30, will be a school board work session. And February 28th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Communication to the Board, Citizen and Employee Representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Don't see anybody there. Next up is the Consent Agenda, which includes the Personnel Report and the Treasures Report for October and November of 2016. And if I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Natty, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Acknowledgement of Contributions. This will be a resolution. I'll start by asking for a motion in a second, and then I'll read the resolution, and then open for discussion. If I get a motion to move it forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Thank you. I'll read the resolution. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any purpose, proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustees of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $24,421.40. And the detailed background in the monetary, a donation of $200 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by anonymous for student participation fees. A donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for weight room improvements. A donation of $1,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for sponsorship of Columbia Heights Columbia Academy Robotics Teams. A donation of $1,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for Concordia Language Camp. A donation of $25 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by Columbia Heights Police Association for robotic supplies. A donation of $400 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by Parsons Electric LLC for Columbia Academy Robotics Team. A donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by BAE PNS for High School Robotics Team. A donations of $3,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities by Medtronics for High School Robotics Teams. A donation of $170 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Matching Gifts Programs for Student Needs. Donation of $188 was made to Valley View Elementary by Life Touch for Student Needs. A donation of $50 was made to Valley View Elementary by the K Foundation for Student Needs. A donation of $5,000 was made to Adult Basic Education by Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary Club for Technology. The donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Keith and Janice Olson, $25. Luann Rustad, $20. Zachary Prax, $100. And Nick Morales, $2,700. Value and Kind. Donation of food to Valley View Elementary by Landalakes Purina for Basic Needs Backpack Food Program, estimated value of $445. Donation of school supplies to Valley View Elementary by Mark Emme for Student Needs, estimated value $1,105.40. Donation of clothing to Valley View Elementary by Nativity Lutheran Church Preschool for Student Needs, estimated value of $75. Donation of DDR mats to Valley View Elementary by David Locker for FIAD Unit, estimated value of $600. Donation of homemade hats and mittens to Highland Elementary by Artie Bercher for Student Needs, estimated value of $150. Donation of homemade hats and mittens to Valley View Elementary by Artie Bercher for Student Needs, estimated value of $150. Donation of hats, gloves, scarves, and socks to Valley View Elementary by Community United Methodist Church for Student Needs, estimated value of $223. Donation of clothing to Valley View Elementary by Highland Catholic Elementary for Student Needs, estimated value $390. And donation of winter coats to Valley View Elementary by David Dejeunet for Student Needs, estimated value of $80. Total Fiscal Year, 2016-2017 Monetary Contributions to date, $46,181.75. Discussion, comments?
I just have a comment. Our community is so incredibly generous looking out for our kids. The contributions of both funds for pursuing things like our robotics is amazing. And the time to knit hats and mittens and stuff, that really shows a real dedication, and we're very, very grateful. Thank you.
I was just going to say, if you have to listen to me read on and on and on, it might as well be for something like this.
Yes.
Thank you for your donations, and if there's no other discussion, roll call.
Palmer? Yes. Mueller?
Yes.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Moving on, next up is Discussion Reports and Information Items. Reports of Members of the Board. Board members will report on activity, board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Holly, you comfortable going first tonight?
Sure. Since the last school board meeting, I participated in the listening session and the work session after that. And then I've had a few meetings with constituents in the community, just hearing what people are thinking and feeling, and it's always good to talk to people.
Yeah, a long, long couple of weeks, lots of busy things for school board. I was able to attend the school board work session last week. I was able to also attend the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference. And that was really interesting. It was the first thing I've been able to attend like that, and actually learned quite a bit there. I was able to attend a wrestling meet, a basketball game, and a swim meet. And I also took in the Columbia Academy Band Concert. Was able to send Superintendent Kelly a pretty touching moment from the kids had that I caught on tape. I also went to the National Geographic Geography Bee at Columbia Academy, near and dear to my heart as a geography major. So, it was pretty, pretty great. Felt really good that I knew the answers. And I've also been able to meet with community members and other members on the board, so thanks for your time.
Yeah, I was also able to attend the MSBA Leadership Conference, and a lot of valuable information, really good speakers. The information that I share with Superintendent Kelly will probably be included in this week's packets, I'm guessing, our meeting Thursday. Also attended the work session last week, a basketball game. Highland did a wonderful job with their movie night last Friday night. A lot of families were able to attend that. It was very well attended. Also attended Columbia Heights High School Conferences in record time. I think I was in and out in about an hour, which was pretty good, if anyone's had that experience before. Also attended the parent meeting for incoming freshmen at the high school. And I just want to say kudos to the staff that put that on. They did a really nice job of presenting some of the, each of the departments had some of the information out for parents to see what the departments had to offer. So, that was well, well done. That's it. Thank you.
Well, I also attended the MSBA Leadership Conference, as always. You bring home such interesting information. And thank you Superintendent for indulging me in having to diffuse after the meeting. I try to come in and kind of go, "Oh, this is what happened, this is great." So, I believe some of the information was already put in the packets already, and hopefully, maybe we can take advantage of some of the programs, some of the things that are going on there. I also attended the work-study session last week, as well as the listening session and the conferences over at the high school. I had not been to conferences at the high school in over 15 years. It was, it was very well organized. It was quite, I mean, it's been 15 years, you know, but it's, it was, I wasn't in and out in a short period of time, though. I really needed to talk with my students, teachers at more length. So, and I do appreciate the time that the staff gave me and the information. What else did we do here? Oh, the chair meeting just prior to, prior to this meeting. That's pretty much it for me.
Yes, I also attended the high school conferences and the work session. I attended the Phase 2 Training. I also was at a boys' varsity basketball game, a girls' junior varsity basketball game. I connected with some members of the community, or Columbia Academy Parent Advisory Council. I attended training with Directors and Superintendent Kelly, and then I met additionally with Director Holmgren and Superintendent Kelly to discuss budgeting and capital planning.
Thank you. I also attended the chair meeting prior to this and have had a couple of phone calls and meetings with the superintendent. Thank you for your time. Superintendent's Report. Do you have one, I think it?
Yes, I do tonight. And I have some of the major reports already out of the way, but I wanted to catch you up on just a few things. I attended the Northeast Metro 916 Superintendent Advisory Committee. And we had a major focus on the new data warehouse system that 916 is thinking about implementing. It's called Illuminate. And Superintendent Hayes is really encouraging us to take a look at that. And so, Director Henneken's is going to do some work along with Director Stenwig to see if we can get that data with more easy access to our staff and to their parents. And in addition to that, Superintendent Hayes would like to see if we could collaborate between 916 and our student data so that we could look at the differences between Level 3 and 4 programming. And so, we're going to look at cost efficiencies if we decide to go down that path. It's pretty exciting. It's a vast system, but we're going to, we're going to take a look at that, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you about that later. The K-12 administrators, I just wanted to inform the board, did their second round of probationary teachers evaluations as required by law, and for those on track for tenure. It was great to once again look at the quality of the staff and the people that we have in our system. It'll be great to welcome many of these people into the family. The North Suburban Post-Secondary Success Consortium. Superintendents and curriculum directors met again for the second time since we formulated that joint powers agreement. We're off to a really good start. We're going to meet again in small groups throughout this next semester. And then we hope to have things accomplished in at least four target areas, planning for the 2018-19 school year. And I know that that sounds kind of a long way off, but we're really looking at the things I've talked to you about as a board, trying to share staff, trying to share curriculum, trying to look at that credentialing project that you talked about, Laura, where, that they have up in another part of the stage. Many of you saw that at MSBA. We're going to do some things around Avid. And so, we're very, very excited about all of that and how that's coming together, and there's no overhead for that, so it'll just be splitting costs of what we're actually doing. I also wanted to let you know that I too attended the Boys' Varsity Basketball Game on Friday night, and I saw the dance line also performed, but I found where the cool people hang out, which is up in the balcony. And so, it was, it was a great game. It was a barn burner, and from the Columbia Heights perspective, the game went very well. I had coffee and conversation with the Columbia Heights Chief of Police, Scott Nidell. We do that on a quarterly basis. And so, we are looking at a couple collaborative ventures that if they come to fruition, I'll bring to the board and include you in them. We're just going to explore some things in the area of literacy, for sure. We want to just see what we can do with literacy since we're working so hard internally. The chief is always there for us, as well as the fire department in collaborating with us, so. And then I also wanted to congratulate him. I did then, and I want to congratulate him tonight, because if you read the papers, he received yet another award from NOKA County, working in the area of mental health and how we approach, how the police approach people with mental health issues on the job. So, that was great. The Anchor Program is about to launch out, everybody. This is a big deal. And I want to thank the board for your support in making it possible. I also want to thank the team. It has been led by Director of Student Services, Director Nicole Hollaby, and our interim director, our new interim director, Laura McLinn, picking up the torch as it opens. Marshall Walker has also done a great deal of work in this area. And so, the kids are launching out, second semester. A lot of work's gone into that, and we're looking forward to working on that with our collaborative partner, which is Nexus. The New York Study Seminar Planning Team is met again. And I just want to thank the staff and the students who are busy out there raising money for that New York trip. We're planning many adventures for them, and you'll see them busily working concession stands to collect. And I think we're going to be doing butter braids and world's finest chocolate, so you never can miss a calorie if you can, you know, if you want it, we've got it, to sponsor this trip. So, you can see one of them. The high school, I wanted to congratulate on TV for two things tonight. One, you've mentioned already, I thought that the conferences and the open house was wonderful. I walked over, and it was very well organized. In addition, there were about eight to 10 students on the stage that really shared their perspectives on what it meant authentically to be at the high school, and they gave incoming students some advice. And it's always so much more, it's better received student to student, I think. And I think it calmed some of the parents, too. So, thank you both to the staff and to the students. Booster Bingo at Sarnas, what a blast. That's all I can say about that. I did that on Monday night, and although Bill and I were not as fortunate as Don Hoyam, who took away real cash and carry there. It goes to a good cause, and I would recommend it to anybody. I'm sure we'll all be back. I want to say special thanks to school board member Loriann Mueller, because she has spent more time, I think, with our teams. With five board meetings in January, and then all of the orientations and the leadership conferences and everything piled into one, she still came back tonight, and I think that's always a good thing. So, thank you Loriann for that. You were really a trooper last night. Then I want to thank everybody. I've had an opportunity to talk individually or on the phone or in person with multiple members around the table, and I want to just thank you for your time. It's really been a lot of fun this month. Thank you.
Chair, excuse me, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Our mission, our core purpose in part reads, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner. Our core values, what drives our words and actions, includes excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, and innovation. Our vision, what we intend to create, includes an image of pride and innovative technology. Our strategic directions, the focus of our time and resources, includes direction E, tell our story. And our 2014-28 Comprehensive Communications Plan supports this school district by providing directions for improving internal and external communications. One way we are meeting all what I shared is through new informational videos for each of our schools and community education. Tonight, Principal Fort and I are proud to share the first of the six videos from Valley View Elementary School.
Me gusta.
Me gusta.
Thirteen, you have won.
It's the students that are enrolled here. It's the diversity of our families that come here. It's the hard-working teachers that come every day. It's the hardworking teachers that come every day.
Shown it.
I think it's just a combination of people that make Valley View special.
We want school to be a fun place. We promote a positive, productive school environment.
It does feel like a community. It does feel like a family. The love of learning that happens throughout the day, the light bulbs that go off. You always feel day to day like you make a difference.
We really work hard to try to find all different ways to provide both enrichment and intervention, giving the kids the opportunity to experience lots of different kinds of learning.
We have a media arts program that 3-5 is doing and they're creating sound. They have iPads, they have Chromebooks, and they can seamlessly go back and forth between them. The number of projects and things we can do, differentiation we can do now because of it is astounding.
Sí, repite la fresa.
For kindergarteners through second graders, we have 30-minute class of Spanish.
Escribe la palabra.
We try to connect to the math and science content and also just teach them basic vocabulary.
So happy to see my son. Every time he goes home, he's talking in English and also talking Spanish.
We're on the front end of the elementary Avid program to prepare our kids to be career and college ready. Avid promotes things like organization, note-taking, critical thinking.
The planner itself is amazing because it's a tool for them to stay organized.
It's nice to be able to see that they're taking notes at an early age. And I can look in his binder and see what he did throughout the day.
I wanted them to think about, I wanted them to dream about the future and to think about something beyond just a high school education.
How many more boxes do we need to color?
The kids are the reason they get up in the morning. The reason we stay late is to give the students the ability to be lifelong learners so that they can take learning into their own hands.
We are doing much more than just teaching math and writing. It is getting them ready for life.
Good evening, Board Chair Larkin, Board Directors and Superintendent Kelly. One of our major goals at Valley View is to promote a productive, orderly, positive, and safe environment at our school. We expect our students to learn a lot. Our staff has agreed upon policies and procedures to achieve those goals. We use the responsive classroom program, which provides us the structure to help promote community building, student accountability, and a climate conducive for teaching and learning. School uniforms help provide the team/family identity we strive for. We have a dedicated staff with an abundance of highly competent people and talented teacher leaders that promote our quality academic program. Supportive parents who agree with our mission, goals, and core values. And that's basically one through four, but I forgot to tell you which ones were which. We had three program highlights displayed in this video. First was K-2 Spanish. Every kindergartner, first, second, first and second grader attend Spanish class every other day for 30 minutes. All third through fifth grade students have media arts every other day for 45 to 55 minutes. Students produce work in the following mediums: photography, film, graphic design, sound production, and computer programming. Avid is primarily a third through fifth grade program, but it is introduced at first and second grade. The major objective is to promote college readiness and lifelong learning. Students learn note-taking strategies, organizational skills, communication skills, critical thinking, and other academic and life skills. Any questions I can answer for you?
It's an amazing video. Nice job. How, you may have mentioned already, but who gets to see this or how do they get to see that? Because I think it's absolutely worth being seen outside of here.
We have multiple ways. Obviously, it's going to be posted on the school website. It's going to be posted on the district website. Will be posted on Facebook and other social media. We're going to be posting it on the educational TV channel. And we've got a couple other options as well. We'll be also able to use it so when they have parent nights and welcome sessions, they can pop that up. So there are lots of different ways.
Excellent. I think I said it, it needs to be seen. That's phenomenal. I'm looking forward to the, no pressure, but the rest of the videos as they come out as well.
Makes me want to spend the day at Valley View. Do we have a release date on that on social media or is it already out? Did we already?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, did we have, do we have a release date on social media or has it already been posted?
We are in the process of finalizing the other five videos. I have two of them that have just come in and need a couple more edits. North Park finished up, I think, about two weeks ago in terms of the filming. And so we should, our goal is to have them, have them back by the end of the month.
Okay. Awesome.
Just as a point of clarification, then Casey, though, if we wanted to release this one to social media, what is our plan for that?
I'm sorry.
The release date of this particular one, because it's done?
Well, my goal initially was to roll them all out at the same time. However, with the case of this, we're going to post this on the school, on the Valley View website tomorrow.
Okay, so then I guess after that is fair game. Yes? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the parent enrollment survey. We provide information on parent enrollment and start with external here. But just for the record, so people understand, this is something that 2013, 2014 school year, same or similar, survey was conducted and information was presented. And a board request, we asked for this to be done again. So they're reporting back to us, that the request of the board asking to come back and hopefully we'll see some comparisons as well.
Chair Larkin, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly. Chair Larkin pretty much has talked about what's happening already tonight, but I just want to go ahead and introduce, we have Don Liftow from Springstead here this evening along with Kelly Smith, and they will be presenting the results of our survey. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Good to be here again. The title of this particular presentation is a little different than what we did last time because we've added a few slides to talk a little bit about survey methodology in more general terms, what Columbia Heights has done in the past, and what type of survey or school districts sometimes embark on for a variety of planning resources. So to begin with, you know, why do a community survey in the first place? We're also going to talk a little bit about methodology of different types of surveys for different purposes, what the district has done in the past. And then we'll go into a review of the most recent open enrollment survey. So in terms of why do a survey, I'm not going to read all these bullets to you, but you can kind of look at them while I'm talking. And as you can see from, from the list, there's a variety of reasons that districts do this kind of work. Some of them could be kind of lumped together in what might be called qualitative or customer satisfaction. Tell us what you think about the district, what you like, what you don't like, what you'd like to see changed or improved, what you'd like to be protected and enhanced that you're already doing well. Some relate to important decisions that need to be made, whether that's approving a strategic plan or roadmap, or whether that's to consider whether or not to be on the ballot in November, asking for additional resources. Some of the finer points towards the bottom relate specifically to testing messages when you're doing communication planning. And I mentioned the feasibility of a technology operating or bond referenda. So districts over the years have done surveys for all of these reasons or oftentimes a combination of multiple reasons at the same time. So how do we do over time? This particular graphic, what you're seeing in kind of the orange, I guess, boxes is all, what all of these school districts have in common, and I'll talk about everything except Columbia Heights initially, what they all had in common is they had a referenda before the voters in 2016. As you can see, some of these are your neighbors, some of them not, includes Bloomington, Indiana, a couple of school districts in Wisconsin, North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale. And so all of these districts contracted to do what we would call random sample stratified surveys to test what people thought about the idea of a referendum, what particular components of that potential referendum they liked or maybe didn't like, and what type of taxes they were indicating they'd be willing to invest in, in their local public schools. So with these particular projects, they all requested additional resources, they all had votes. Fortunately, they all won. And so in that colored box, you're, what you're seeing is the yes vote that was predicted by the survey. The blue dot represents what the actual yes vote was when the votes were counted. And then we put in Columbia Heights, even though that wasn't a 2016 project, just to show you some history, the operating one over on the left, and the capital project levy to the right of that. And so while there's some variation in these projects, you certainly can see that generally speaking, the, the surveys were accurate, predictive, pretty well, in terms of what was actually going to happen, you know, when the votes were actually cast. The Columbia Heights one where you did have some variation, as long as the variation is to the north, we're perfectly happy with that. But that was a little bit of an anomaly because in the survey itself, we tested the operating, which as you can see, we hit right on the nose. Then we tested the possibility of having a bond referendum, which never happened. Then we tested the possibility of a technology referendum, and that did happen. But the actual projects related to that were kind of a combination of, of the other two. So it wasn't quite apples to apples. But as I said, as long as the, the outcome is better than what we predicted, that's just fine. So this would be examples of what we would call stratified random sample surveys, all done to help the school board decide, should we go on the ballot? What should we ask for at what tax impact? And while they are not perfect, they're much better than guessing. So what types of surveys do districts do? One type of survey is called a census survey. And when you do a census survey, you survey everybody. And I'll give you an example of that right now. For the directors that are here tonight, up at this table and over here, raise your hand if you're really thrilled to be hearing this presentation for the third time. Raise your hand if you're not quite as thrilled to hear it for the third time. Assuming all the directors are here, you just saw a census survey. So a census survey is you survey everybody in the population. And assuming they're telling the truth, it's 100% accurate because everybody indicated what their opinion was. So the margin of error is zero. The disadvantage is try this for the entire school district sometime. Just doesn't work. You can't do it. But that's one type of survey that districts do. A second type is called opt-in. Opt-in survey is when you design a questionnaire about something you'd like to know more about. You post it on your website and you tell people, go to the website, take the survey. So people are opting in to take it or they're choosing not to take it. Some of the advantages, it's inexpensive, it's easy, it's a nice engagement tool, it gives people the opportunity to put their two cents worth in. The biggest disadvantage is the, you can't predict what everybody thinks based on who opts in. Because by definition, for a school district, you're going to have too many parents opting in as compared to non-parents, too many younger people compared to older people. So it's not a representative sample of the district as a whole. These are increasingly being done by Springstead as a supplement to a scientific random sample survey. So first you withdraw your scientific sample to help with decision-making. And once you have that data, then do your opt-in for engagement purposes. I talked a little bit about unrepresented samples with the opt-in, and I'll just take a second on this slide. One school district that recently did one, 42% of the respondents were parents, but only 20% of the registered voters were parents. So this is not something you would want to make important decisions on because you'd get a false positive with so many parents. The stratified random sample is what we've done in Columbia Heights when the board and administration were considering the possibility of going on the ballot. And with that particular kind of a study, what we're trying to do as best we can is have that sample, which might be 300 or 350 interviews, match the demographics of everybody. And with this type of a survey, you can predict within the margin of error what the actual opinion is of the entire sample. And that's, that's what that chart was about when I was showing you those rectangles of what the survey predicted. There's a few slides that help you understand what I've just said, when I said we want the sample to mirror the demographics of everybody. And so what you're seeing here is actually from Columbia Heights, from a prior survey of this type. And in the blue, the blue represents the demographic profile of everybody who's registered to vote in Columbia Heights. The red is the composition of the sample we interviewed. So as you can see with parent, non-parent, we hit it almost exactly on the nose. So if you see the blue bars looking like the red bars, you know that we successfully controlled for that particular demographic. Here's the same study we did for Columbia Heights controlling for age. They're never perfect because you're dealing with computer-generated multiple calls, but as you can see, it's very, very close. And this was, again, Columbia Heights, the control we had in for geographic location of the person's home. So you make sure that you're not missing part of the community or significantly oversampling part of the community. So that's the stratified random sample. So in terms of the district's history, at least history in the last decade, you did two stratified random sample surveys prior to making decisions about referenda. And the project we just finished was the second open enrollment survey. Open enrollment survey is a non-probability survey in technical terms. And with those, we get a database of everybody that left the district, everybody that came into the district. We contract for seven, eight, nine nights of calling. We just call, 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 and get as many as we can. But we're not doing the demographic controls that I talked about with the other types of surveys. So the most recent project, what draws people to the district, what draws them away, is what we were taking a look at. The calls were done in late November, 170 completed interviews. I don't remember how many nights of calling. Was it seven, eight, nine, something like that? Parents were asked about the youngest student in order for us to give you a breakdown by elementary, middle school, and high school. In this particular survey, we identified factors that we thought might contribute to a parent deciding either to leave here, if they lived here and go somewhere else, or conversely, to come here. And then as we went through those factors, which we did in random order, people were asked if that particular factor had a great deal of influence, some not very much or none at all, on their decision about to enroll, to stay here, to leave, or to come here from another district and enroll in Columbia Heights. Not all elements applied to every grade level. So, you know, we didn't ask elementary parents about advanced placement, for example. So starting with this particular slide, you're seeing the aspects that were evaluated. And I'm going to go through them relatively quickly. And if you haven't seen this before, if it's, if it's only your second time rather than your third time, there are lots of colors, lots of words, lots of charts, and it takes a while to get your head around it. But I'll do the best I can to help you understand what you're looking at. So in this particular case, there are 14 aspects related to that enrollment decision. And again, we were asking people related to the quality of teaching, which is at the top, for example, did that have a great deal of influence, some influence, not too much, or not at all in your, in your enrollment decision? As you can see on that second bullet, quality As you can see on that second bullet, quality of teaching, safety, and academic programs are leading the parade. And as I go through these slides, you're going to see six, eight, 10 slides that are going to look kind of like this. And you'll notice that quality of teaching, academic program, safety, keep coming up to the top. When you get into the middle school and high school, you get a few variations on the theme. Did we just lose something? There we go, sorry. But you'll see those three words, and you'll see those tending to be the top areas pretty consistently. So first, we're looking at students who live somewhere else and are coming into Columbia Heights. And with that particular group, was it 70 interviews, Kelly? So we completed 70 interviews. So these people live somewhere else and are choosing to come here. As you can see over to the right, again, quality of teaching, safety, academic programs. I'm not going to read all the rest of these to you, but as I said, those are coming to the top. Now, some of those differences, you know, aren't huge, but nonetheless, the same three elements tended to be very influential. Since we had done a similar study in 2013, we were able to take the results of that study and kind of compare and contrast to 2016, which you're seeing over on the right. I'm not going to go through all parts of the color coding, but specifically, as you're looking at the dark green, the dark green is a great deal of influence. And you'll notice in those pairs of charts, 2016 is always on the top. So if you look over on the right side and see how big those green bars are, and then remembering that 2016 is on the top and 2013 is below, that's what relates to that first bullet. In 2016, for whatever reason, there was a higher percentage that picked great influence as compared to some, indicating that that particular element was very, very important to them. Teaching quality overtook safety as the top influence in 2016, although as you look at those two, they're relatively close. Now, you're comparing the size of the green bars for quality of teaching, and then right below that for safety, both very high. This is continuing with the remainder of the 14 items. And again, starting with diversity at the top, going down through pre-K. We're still with incoming students, focus on great influence. And what we've done in this particular chart is tried to depict what the rank was in 2013 compared to the rank in 2016. When I say rank, what I'm talking about is which of the factors had the greatest influence on the enrollment decision. Number one would be the highest influence in terms of rank. And the color coding there is showing you that if there was a significant change from 2013 to 2016, three or more ranked changes, that's color-coded in green, if it moved up the rank, and color-coded in that pink if it went down. So for instance, test scores, in 2013, that was the ninth strongest influence, in 2016 it was the fourth strongest influence. So it went up four in rank. Should I quit bumping that?
I don't know what we're getting.
Did we lose it again?
There it goes.
That's awfully close to my forward button. I'll try to be careful. And here, we're seeing the combination of a great deal of influence and some, so it's not only reporting to you the people who said this had a great deal, but also picking up that second scale of some influence. And again, the color coding is factors that changed three or more up or down, the green being up from 11th to 8th, the other two going down. This chart switches from a broad view of incoming students to specifically elementary-age children. There were 32 interviews, quality of teaching, academic program, safety, same three at the top that you've seen before. Now, with this chart, we're taking both great deal of influence and adding some influence, and showing you the same information. Same three are at top, safety, quality of teaching switching spots, but still the same three at the top. Student diversity moves up three positions. Same information for middle school age students, 22 interviews. The biggest change here is transportation moves up, joining teaching. You can see that the safety is almost identical to transportation. Academic programs a little bit lower, and technology coming into the picture. When we add both great deal of influence and some, quality of teaching, academic program, safety, those are the big three again, that you've heard me say numerous times. At the high school level with 16 interviews, quality of teaching still at the top, joined by personal technology, I think that may have been the first time that it made the top two. Safety is still up very high, as it was on all the other ones as well. When we add in some influence, test scores, academic programs, and facilities move up three notches, and safety, personal technology, and transportation drop down three notches. Quality of teaching still number one. Now we're switching gears, and we're talking to students and families who live within the boundaries of the Columbia Heights School District and are choosing to enroll in a public school somewhere outside of the district. So when they responded to the same questions, in terms of what things influenced them the most, look what we have at the top again. So the people who are choosing to come here are coming for quality of teaching, for safety, for academic programs. People who are choosing to leave are leaving for those same qualities, both directions. Some of the other ones, you know, maybe move around a little bit, up and down, depending on the grade level of the students. Here, we're taking both a great deal of influence and some influence, same three areas remain at the top. Electives and extracurriculars move up several notches. Now we're looking at 2016 compared to 2013. Again, for whatever reason, you'll note that the green part of the bars for 2016 are consistently greater than the green bars for 13, meaning that more people identified particular factors as having a great deal of influence as compared to three years ago. This is continuing with the same types of responses for outgoing students. AP honors move from the bottom to the middle of the pack, as you can see. Still with outgoing students, in terms of great influence, and again, here, we're just highlighting those that changed more than three notches from 2013 to 2016. You can see test scores, diversity, both went up by four notches, and extracurricular and pre-K went down in rank by four and seven, respectively. This is taking both great deal of influence and some influence, and again, comparing the ranking. You're not seeing any color coding on this one, because nothing was a significant change of three or more, in terms of how they were ranked in 13 and how they were ranked in 16. Outgoing students, specifically elementary-aged families, quality of teaching, safety, academic Adding in some influence, test scores jumped up into number four. The same three, quality of teaching, academic programs, and safety were most important. Middle school students, 21 interviews, a familiar three again at the top. Adding in some influence, electives got up into number four. Class size and transportation each dropped down. And high school students, 24 interviews. I think this is the first time you've seen safety at the top. Quality of teaching, academic programs, same three, just a different order. Adding in some influence, quality of facilities came up with almost equal to quality of teaching. Academic programs a little bit less. Class size is, I think, for the first time, ended up on top. We also asked respondents, once they had selected a school district for their youngest child, and that youngest child could be an elementary child, a middle school, or a high school, would they ever consider moving that child to another school district? And as you can see, in the kind of burnt orange color, about 60% of the respondents said no, they would not. Those responded, who responded yes, were asked a follow-up question in terms of what reasons they might do so. Parents of elementary and middle school children were asked, are you planning for your child to attend Columbia Heights after 8th grade? And you're seeing two pie charts on this particular slide. The top one are people who have moved into the district from somewhere else under open enrollment, currently enrolled here. And as you can see, a little over 81% are saying, yes, I am planning to have my children attend the high school after 8th grade. Technical problems again. And then the bottom chart relates to people who are currently leaving Columbia Heights to attend a public school outside of the district. And not surprisingly, a very high percentage, 70%, indicated that they would not be likely to have their child attend high school here. The last probe, related to potentially offering up ideas that may or may not have any influence on people's decisions, were for parents of students attending outside the district, were asked if the district changed its transportation policy to reduce walking zones to one-half mile for elementary students and a mile for grade 6 through 12, would that, would you choose for your youngest student to attend one of Columbia Heights public schools in the future? So these are people who live here, they're going somewhere else, and so are saying, if that policy changed, would you might likely consider coming back? And the vast majority indicated they would not, you know, 2/3, about 1 in 5, said maybe, essentially, with 22% saying that that could influence their decision. A follow-up question, changed the dynamic a little bit more, just indicating that, you know, what if the transportation zones were eliminated altogether? Would that influence your decision? And again, you're looking at somewhere around 6 out of 10 saying, no, that would not influence my decision. A little over 1/3 are saying that, you know, maybe that would affect my decision. Keep in mind, when you see a statistic like this, was it 100 interviews?
100.
So you're talking, you know, maybe 36 out of 100 might be influenced. You know, let's just be optimistic and say, maybe, you know, 25% of them actually would make a change. You're looking at, you know, eight or nine students. And so this gets quickly into a fairly significant cost-benefit analysis, you know, based on the numbers when you consider those options. The rest of the survey got into some related issues, not specifically for open enrollment, but certainly helpful for KC and people doing communication planning, asking about preferred communications. As you can see, about 60% say, I want both, meaning traditional as well as electronic. Preferences for traditional print communications are lower than in 2013, and so that's probably a continuation of a trend we'll continue to see in the future. Of those preferring electronic communications, email was number one. Text message was higher than 13, but still a distant second. We'll see how that, you know, looks again, as we see changes in how we all communicate over time. This particular chart at the bottom includes 143 responses from participants who selected both electronic or both from the previous question. That includes social media, it could be Twitter, it could be Facebook, et cetera. Of those liking the traditional way of getting information, direct mail was the preferred way to get it, quite similar to 2013, as you can see. In terms of some general conclusions from this particular study, as I stated before, both incoming and outgoing families are making their enrollment decisions heavily based on the same three core attributes. Quality of teaching, safety, and academic programs. So people are coming here for those reasons, people are leaving seeking those same qualities. So that's a real challenge for any district. It's not as if, you know, you're seeing two very different criteria, or set of criteria, that people are making their decisions on, where you can suddenly shift how you're doing things and expect to, you know, do better on your open enrollment in and out. It's the same three things. So it's going to boil down to a great extent on how do we accentuate the great things we're doing. And the, you know, video we saw tonight is just one example of a larger strategy in that direction. Here, it just talks a little bit about elementary, middle school, and high school. As I said, those three qualities were very, very common and similar throughout. You got a few little tweaks and differences when you got into the high school and the middle school, and those are certainly worth additional investigation and conversation as you continue your planning. This is continuing to just differentiate a little bit in terms of which characteristics had the strongest influence, and what particular areas kind of crept in, particularly at that middle school or high school level. 38% of the parents said they would consider changing districts, which means 62% of course would not. The vast majority of people who have chosen to come here will keep their kids here into high school. Very few would choose to bring their kids back if they have left. And in terms of this walking zone thing, certainly that could have a, I guess, modest impact on some families. But as I said before, you'll have to take a look at the, you know, the numbers, and think through what you're potentially gaining, and what the cost is of providing that additional And it may be that the numbers just aren't there to make that cost effective, but that's another... another study. Most folks are very happy with electronic communications. You've got a significant group also that would like to continue to use both, and email is currently the preferred way to communicate, with Twitter not long far behind, I'm sure.
So the questions, is it okay to ask questions then? Okay, so the questions around communications, were they like, what would you prefer, or what are you receiving and you like?
I think probably we had both in that questionnaire, did we not, Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah. In some cases, people were given the opportunity to tell us what their preferred way was. I don't remember the exact wording of the questions. Did you bring the questionnaire?
I'm trying to find that, yeah.
Have Kelly look and see what that exact wording was if he has the questionnaire.
I'm wondering because, I mean, if the top reasons for incoming and outgoing are the same, then it's a game of perception. It's an issue of perceptions. And so I wonder, what are the things that could impact people's perceptions? Is communication enough? Was there anything asking the parents what they felt about communication?
Did you have the questionnaire or not?
Just says, which of these forms would you prefer the district to use in the future? Was the way, kind of the follow-up was asked to them.
Okay. Okay.
I would, it'd be interesting to ask, how are they actually, where's their biggest inputs on the Columbia Heights School District actually coming from? You know, neighbors, peers, that would have been an interesting question to ask.
What's influencing their perception?
What's influencing your perception would be a good question. I mean, I know we already did it, but it'd be interesting to know that information.
I would just like to say, you may see some of that in the upcoming, in the, this was the external and our internal surveys. I also want to say that when the board asked us to do this, they really wanted somewhat of a replication study from the questions we asked before so that they could see. So even though we could brainstorm other questions, we tried to stay pretty true to the board's original ask. But I think that when Director Holliday talks a little bit with Director Stanvig later, you'll have some of the qualitative that you might be looking for in that. Just my guess for now.
Yeah, your question is really very good, and I might just add to what Superintendent Kelly said, that in a number of studies recently, what we're doing is, you know, I'm not surprised that people would say quality of teaching is number one. But if you wanted to peel that back a little bit more, a follow-up probe, you know, could be asking people to tell us, how do you know when that's happening? How do you identify it? What characteristics of the teacher are you referring to? And another area that we're doing more follow-up probes also relates to diversity. When people tell us that diversity is their third most important factor, without some fairly deep follow-up, we don't know if that's a negative factor or a positive factor, just based on the ranking. And so in a different type of study, as Superintendent Kelly said, where we weren't trying to just replicate to compare, those would be opportunities for peeling the onion back.
Yeah, so you can have valid results, because if you ask different ones, then you're not going to be able to compare apples to apples.
Yeah. In a non-scientific way, you'll pick up some of that nuance and flavor in the open-ended responses once we get those to you and you can see those. Because in those cases, people weren't checking off a box or picking something off a list, they were giving their opinion. And so you'll have, you know, that additional information to look at also.
And that will be in the Friday update, so you can look for that.
Takes a little longer to prepare that than it does what I've gone through so far, because, you know, people talk for fifteen minutes and you've got to decide what you're going to put down.
I had another question, just to follow up on the transportation question. How, did you have any controls in place to find out how many people were already receiving transportation? Because if they were, in theory, then if they were already receiving transportation, that would be not something that would change anything, correct?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Again, the stratified random sample survey that I talked about earlier that you'd done, you know, pre-referendum, we have all kinds of controls, demographic controls in those studies. This, again, was a non-predictive, kind of a quota survey, where we just hit the phones for nine nights in a row and got as many interviews done as we could.
Okay.
Good question.
I have a question. I think, and this is something kind of related to what Holla had said, when we're looking at these results and we see that essentially the same three categories are the reasons why people are coming into the district as well as the reason why people are choosing to leave the district. But we're looking at two different sets of population who live in potentially two different areas. So, for example, looking at the people that are coming into the district, it may be that where they're currently located or where they're moving away from, the quality of teaching, academic programs, and safety is not meeting their expectations, and they're seeing something better here. The other part of that is people who are living here, and that they are then seeing that the quality of education, academic programs, and safety is better somewhere else. Is that correct?
That's how I would interpret it, yes. You said it very well.
Do we get demographic data on the respondents, or is it just like the answers to the question? Like, if we were able to look at some of those, the questions specifically about busing, could we compare their address to see if they are in the zones, or no? That's not a thing? Okay.
Not in this type of survey.
I can see you've had numerous surveys here because you're asking excellent questions.
But you were specifying earlier that if you were doing a more specific survey, there would, you would be narrowing that down more, but this type of survey doesn't.
The type, yeah.
Yeah. With the stratified survey, we would control for where people live, their age, their gender, whether they always vote or never vote, parent status.
Homeowner versus renter.
Homeowner versus renter. There's probably typically seven, eight, nine controls. And when you do that type of a study, then you can go back and say, well, let's just look at just people who are renting. What did they say? Let's look just at women. Let's just look at younger people. Let's just look at people who always vote. So you get more context and detail with that type of study. You can't do that type of study for what you did because the sample's too small. Other questions for Kelly or me?
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Laura.
One of the things I wanted to draw your attention to is at your desk tonight, Springstead has given you this as well. So you have two things, you have the survey methodology, and then you also have broken out, and it's a little easier sometimes to read than on the graphs, for each question things broken out. So at your leisure, you may want to just peruse this. And as I said earlier, the open-ended questions will be in your Friday packets so that you can take a look at those. I personally want to thank Springstead for putting in the time and the effort and the energy with us. Dawn has been out here many times, and Kelly's getting to know us better and better as we email and as he comes out to work with the management team. And so I want to thank you, because I know it does take a lot of time to do any kind of survey for us, and with the complexities of our languages and all that kind of stuff in the past, you really worked with us to give us good information. And so I want to thank you on behalf of the admin team for providing this as well.
Our pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to look at Parents Enrollment Survey Internal as Superintendent Kelly rooted
I'm just going to stay up here for a while.
Keep your eye on that computer.
Chair Larkin, Directors, Superintendent Kelly. Just to confuse you, we thought we would bring our internal parents survey in contrast to the external parents survey, but it was put on the agenda by the superintendent because she thought it would be interesting to see. Ours is a little bit more qualitative as far as conversations that we were able to have with families. And we also did questions that we had on five years ago when we called parents. So we will begin.
Yes.
Director Stanvig.
Yeah, so again, this is an informational update on a resident outreach survey conducted by, internally. And our mission, of course, is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this presentation this evening will focus on the core values of community and excellence.
So the purpose was to gather information from resident families who are choosing to enroll their children elsewhere to better assist Columbia Heights Public Schools to meet the needs of all students. So the timeline that we had was November, we had a planning meeting, and then we compiled the calling list. We had our final organizational planning meeting, we conducted the phone survey fourteenth through the eighteenth of November. We compiled the data, and we are here presenting. And then our next steps will be to develop an action plan to help us retain or recapture students.
So this information is being used first to inform the school board, superintendent, district management team, and administration. Next, to develop an action plan, as Director Holliday stated, to retain and recapture resident students who attend elsewhere. Then ensure that it's aligned, the plan is aligned with the strategic plan, and create, expand, and enhance our programming. So some of the details of the process, we started with a list of nine hundred names and narrowed that list down to six hundred and seventy-five names due to eliminating duplicates or invalid numbers. And then the calling team began, and we were actually able to connect with one hundred and forty-one people, which is twenty-one percent, which was a high percentage.
We were very happy with the people that were willing to talk to us and who we left messages would actually take the time to call us back if they weren't home. So the first question was, do you still live in the Columbia Heights School boundaries? And we came up with that question after, starting with the calls. Oh, thank you, yeah.
And the second question?
Yeah. And because many people, when we would call, and that's why we had to take some numbers off, they said, well, I don't live here anymore, or this is the wrong number because they had a cell phone, I know somebody else's, so we started with that. What type of school does your child currently attend? List all the schools your children are attending, because some parents had either maybe a student in Columbia Heights Public Schools and then one not, or a variety of other schools. Why did you choose to enroll your child in another setting? What are the three most important qualities that you look for in a school district? And what recommendations would you have for the district to retain more Columbia Heights resident students? Okay, question one, sorry. It's a lot of moving pieces. So question one, do you still live in the Columbia Heights School boundaries? And we discontinued that, obviously, if it was no. What type of school does your child currently attend? And we had one hundred and forty-one responses. You can see from the chart, the vast majority, fifty-eight percent, attended another public school other than our school. Sixteen percent was a charter school. Three percent, or nine percent, was parochial or religious. Nine percent was a private school, so we differentiated that if it was non-parochial or religious. And you can see as small percentages for alternative school, online school was one percent, and special needs school was one percent.
All right, so the third thing that we asked them to do was to list the names of the schools where their children are attending, and we heard forty-one different schools listed. So here's a breakdown of the forty-one. So as you can see, the majority of them, it was singletons. So if, you know, if there was less than four percent of the responses, if, you know, maybe we had one for this and one for that, so that's the pink area. Fridley was twenty-five percent. As you can see, Global Academy, eight percent. Ten percent for Mounds View, and then the others are lower than that. So seven percent Immaculate Conception in Minneapolis, four percent Northeast. And then again, with the largest, a mix of rounding out the other forty-one responses that we received.
And literally, that thirty-four percent literally were singletons.
Yeah, too many to list.
It was all just one person had the name of a school.
There's no percentage for St. Anthony in there? No, nothing more than one percent?
It was less than four percent, so it would be within that, if there were those responses, it would be within the four, or the thirty-four.
The other.
So what exactly is included in the other?
So if someone, if we only got that response, say, one or two, you know, less than the four percent, we put them into the other. Because there's forty-one responses, we didn't want to list all forty-one in one, on one slide.
Got it. If you want that information, we can get it too, but...
It just wasn't a significant number of, to list. All right, question four.
Why did you choose to enroll your child in another setting? So as you can see, the largest was academics, twenty-six percent. After that was location or moved. And that, there were a lot of stories around that, meaning that location meant, you know, what's like a block from my house to go to this other district, whereas it's further to go if I stay in the district, to while we lived in District A, moved to your district, B, and put my child, kept my child in A. So that was common as well, that, you know, we moved into Columbia Heights, but we started our child in another district, so we're just continuing them. And then the third at twenty percent was safety. Thirteen percent was school climate. And we didn't define any of these, we just, you know, asked them what the issue was, and they told us. And then you can see, six percent was religion, four percent word of mouth, and that's where someone, I think Director Stevenson had said, how did you find out? And four percent of the people said, well, my neighbor told me that they thought another school was better. Four percent class size and four percent childcare. So, you know, I live in Columbia Heights, but I work in Minneapolis, my child cares Minneapolis, so my child goes to Minneapolis. What are the three most important qualities that you look for in a school district? And we have a bar chart. It's not working? I'll go over them, and then you can look at the visuals, sorry.
Nicole, let's just hold on one second, because we don't have this in front of us, so...
Oh, you don't have it even in front of you, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just saying that it'd be nice to go with the presentation, and I'm sure that Brian can, and for the viewing public, they can catch up as well.
Got it.
There we go.
Can I ask a question in between before we continue? And maybe you said this already, but, so when you asked the question, for example, why did you choose to enroll your child in another setting? Were these the options, did you say it was academics, childcare, whatever, or you gathered the qualitative responses and you classified them?
Yes, we classified them after we gathered it. And we met as a team, we should have given credit for all the nice people in our departments in teaching and learning and student services that made the calls. Everyone was all hands on deck, and we all made calls. And then we got together, back together as a team to say, well, if they say that, you know, the, I don't have enough choices in, you know, whatever, electives or whatever, would that be academics? Would it be? So we, yeah, we were able to come to consensus. Thank you for asking that. So what are the three most important qualities that you look for in a school district? As you can see, not surprisingly, everyone would say high academic standards is an important quality, look for a school district was the top. Positive school climate, quality of teachers, small class sizes was twenty percent. And then everything was, you know, not that significant after that. Diversity of student population, extracurricular was ten percent, career in college ready, twelve percent. Safety, ten percent. Communication, five percent. Variety of classes, five percent. So clearly, high academic standards, positive school climate, and quality of teachers was What recommendations would you have for the district to retain more Columbia Heights resident students? And we got eighty-three responses for that, and this is where there was a lot of conversation with people, so it was really interesting. I'm sorry, I feel I'm very talkative. So the recommendations were, number one was stricter discipline. That came up quite a bit. Number two was, I don't really know what I would tell you, because I'm not that familiar with your school, or I don't really have advice, because I'm not an educator, so it was just kind of this, I don't know. Improve the academics, increase communication, improve test scores... Improve the academics, increase communication, improve test scores, improve school safety, decrease class size, improve your staff, eliminate open enrollment, I prefer parochial or private for my student. Nothing, I've heard positive things. That was, we heard that quite a bit, or I heard it quite a bit. And that pretty much was, oh, no, I've heard really great things about the district, but my daycare is, you know, somewhere else. Or, but, I've had my child for 12 years in school A, and we just moved to Columbia Heights. So that was really exciting to say, you know, don't change anything, you're doing a great thing. School hours, reduce discrimination, increase support for immigrants, and increase sports. Do you have any questions for us?
Can you remind us, if this is available, of the number of students who opt in to the district? And then, do we have those numbers?
Yes, we could get those numbers.
Okay. And the opt-out, then?
Yeah.
We can look at. Do other school districts typically release those numbers to the public? I wonder how much mobility there is in neighboring districts then, too. I don't know if that's too much work to.
I don't know if we could necessarily do all of that, because we don't have really a resident demographic person on board. We don't, I can tell you that when we were down at a policy conference, I think some of you were there, we sat in on our neighboring school district next door. And it's very interesting, some of the districts are very similar, but they look at it a different way in that our neighboring district has about the same, I don't know about the same ins and outs, but they really prefer to look at it that it's, isn't it wonderful that 1,000 students choose our district? And that is how they presented down there, where it's not an issue, isn't it wonderful that from across the region, we, that I think they said a third or whatever it was, of their students really choose to come to their district from outside the district based on their programming. And so it's a, looking at it as a glass half-empty or full. And I, so I'm looking at that, and I think that was kind of an eye-opener for me, sitting in the audience, just of the, just of the way they looked at their enrollment issues. And so I wanted to make that comment, and Natty, if we had, if we were probably Minneapolis and had nine researchers over there in their department, we could probably do things like that, but at this point, we probably can't.
I just didn't know if it was like easy to find. My, like, demographics, geography nerd just kind of leaps out in moments like this. Do you want to work on it? No, just kidding. I could call around.
Just for the sake of discussion, I know I sat at one of the MSDA meetings and superintendents from around the metro area, and I'm going to preface by saying, anything we can do to keep, retain, and bring back students, I think is super, super important. But I think that there needs to be a realization that, you know, there's a reality of mobility, and there's some of the things, the answers that you're getting, they have nothing to do with our districts. So hopefully isolating what are they saying are things that weak action can impact. And I would guess that if they did the same survey with the one that 25% of our students went to, I'd bet that there's 25% that have left and come here. And it is perception, Pollard, or Pollard, Pollard, you talked about perception from the previous study, and I think it's a huge piece of what helps make people's choices. The neighbor told me the school was good or bad, things like that. And we talked about this four years ago, and you know, Communication Director now, and there's been a ton of strides and things, I think, positive that have taken place, and more that we can do, but helping to build on that perception. I was accused of being a cheerleader years ago, and I'll continue to be a cheerleader to promote the positive things that we have going on here, to help to, again, retain, bring back, and welcome those that are choosing to come here. So I applaud the effort of trying to figure out, you know, and openly saying, what would you suggest we do differently? That's a hard question to ask sometimes, so I'm glad we're asking those questions, and I'm glad that we're willing to that information and see what we can do differently for it. But I think it's a much, there's a lot of moving pieces, as Nicole said, too, whether it's the perception or, you know, anyway, so.
It's a very complicated issue, and, you know, perceptions, and there's a ton of factors. But it is important to acknowledge the students we have. It is important to acknowledge the students who are here and chose to come here, and the ones who chose us from somewhere else, and to continue working on getting the rest. So acknowledging the half-full and working to fill the empty part, so.
One of the things that really occurred to me from all of the studies and the directors, and I talked about it, is that once they leave, they really don't come back. So the whole notion that we're going to, you know, build and capture, we saw a uptick a little bit with not people coming back, but with the PLI, the Personalized Learning Initiative at the academy, that the children in the elementary buildings really flowed into, in those transition points. And so one of the things over the years that we've been looking at is, what are we doing between 5th, 4th, it used to be 4th and 5th grade if they were over at North Park, but 5th and 6th, between 8th and 9th? And that, you know, Principal Robleski is a classic case where he goes down to schools. We like to complement and not compete with people that want to make choices for different reasons. But he has gained permission to go down to Global Academy, and he presents down there. And we asked permission to talk to students that are going to Immaculate Conception. Many times, they are picking religious schools, or they have other, they have other preferences. So that outreach, particularly for the high school, because they don't necessarily always move in, is a little harder to gain them back. But I want to compliment the high school, and I don't, because they really did recapture some students that their parents probably wouldn't have thought about us, because they were in a sector. But because he made that personal to go over and visit, and invite them over to shows, theater pieces, activities, we did not recapture because they weren't with us, but we captured some that did not have a preferred high school to go to. So sometimes it's just, it's just going after that and trying different strategies.
If you look at your, the enrollment numbers for 9th grade for this year compared to what the 8th graders at Columbia Academy were last or demonstrates exactly what you're saying, that there was, where that capture came from, I don't know, but there are more students, and the numbers significantly increased compared to previous, so.
I've been trying to get your attention. I actually think this is very positive. I'm really incredibly surprised by the, well, I mean, for a while, everybody was saying it was because of this, that, and the other thing we're finding out from these surveys, it really has nothing to do with, with any of that. I do see a lot of opportunities here, you know, in a couple of categories here that we can maybe take a, maybe take a closer look at, and I'm sure you're already working on that. Because I, with us being such a small, central district, I mean, geographically small, it's not unusual for, for people to, we're so close to other opportunities that the responses that I'm hearing here are things that are fairly beyond our control, you know? Or it just might be a perception thing. And I'm really excited to see maybe what we can do with a, with a couple of these here, especially if people are coming into the district for the same reasons that they're leaving the district. You know, we can only, I mean, we've, you've gone a long way into the personal, you know, learning initiative and trying to, you know, craft the education for the student. But of course, there's always the, you know, my best friend goes to, you know, the other one over there, and I want to go with them.
Well, we used the opportunity because we were not a specific script, as the Springstead, where, so we all used the opportunity to put in a lot of plugs for the school. And we basically had our little lists of everything we wanted to talk about, so when they talked about academics, we're like, oh, did you know that we won the AP, you know? So we were putting a lot of plugs in.
We call that push polling.
Yeah.
Polling.
After they answered, right?
Yeah. Yeah, of course, no, no, no.
And I love that.
No, and people would ask questions, too, like, oh, do you have this, or whatever, you know? So we were just conversational, but of course, we asked the question first. But, you know, even if it doesn't bring those people back because they're happy for the daycare or whatever reason, it would help that word of mouth, you know, when we do have the conversations with people, so that they say, hey, did you know that they are doing whatever, so.
It was, sorry, it was convenient to have internal callers. There was one caller who said, well, you know, I do have some questions about how to enroll, and so we could, he said, oh, great, well, here's, here's the information, and here's what you do, and here's, you know, when the placement center is open, and come on in.
That's awesome.
All those touchpoints with the community are important, and I love Casey, what you're doing in the community, I think that's great. I think the communities notice the strides of outreach, and I think particularly what you've mentioned, those transition points. I think it was invaluable to have the principal at the time from Columbia Academy go on over to North Park and talk to the PTA, and those things are great, but just looking to continue to expand our understanding of what makes kids choose schools and not, and I think that helps us ask, it's a little bit of a litmus test for what's public perception, and also what's going well, and where can we improve. So I don't want to make it sound like I'm asking these demographic questions, because I'm on this, like, hunt to find bad, but I also think it is an opportunity for learning for all of us.
I'd like to just comment, too, on that, I think that, looking at, I mean, with this information, we've got some really good data, but I want to caution us, because I think we can't get complacent. You know, as the Springstead survey shows, that, you know, 81% of the students who leave don't ever come back. So I think it's critical that we, we keep them. And we've, we've surveyed parents or families who are living here in Heights and are, you know, sending their students somewhere else. We are surveying parents who don't live in Columbia Heights and are sending their, their students here, but we're, are we appropriately paying attention to parents who are currently here, who are sending their students here, and maybe thinking about sending their students somewhere else? Because if they're here in kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th grade, will they continue in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? And I know that in the Springstead survey, they mentioned that, that they will continue to stay if they're already here. But those are parents who are already coming here, they've already chosen our district. They're not parents who maybe moved into Columbia Heights, this is the school we go to, now I'm going to look to see what some other options are, or my neighbor goes somewhere else. And that's, that's a population that we haven't, haven't, don't have data on right now. And I think that's concerning, because once we lose them, the research is showing that we're not getting them back. And I, when I also look at the, the group that they reported of, that are leaving our district, there's obviously, whether it's real or perceived, we're not meeting expectations. I mean, there is expectations that we are not meeting in academic programs, quality of education, you know, teaching, that are reasons, top three reasons that people are leaving this district. And so we really need to figure out how we either meet those expectations, how do those, are those expectations reasonable for them to have, for us to be able to accomplish? And, and then moving forward, can we keep those folks in the district, or will they choose to, to continue to leave? I mean, I don't think that we can, we can't accommodate everybody. There's programs out there that, that we don't have, and that we won't have. And I think that if, if families choose that for their, their students, that that's their right to do that, and that, I wish them well with that. But if there's things that we are providing just as well or better than neighboring districts, we need to make sure that we're communicating that, we're representing that, we're showing that, and, and that we can prove it without just saying, yeah, we think we're great, come here, too. We need to have measurable ways that we're, we're demonstrating that.
I'm going to say yes, this is an and. I think that earlier I was going to comment, but we were in the middle of Dawn's presentation, that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And Dawn often says that, Dawn's from Springstead. And, and it's really, really hard in a choice economy, and I think we're going to see more of that with the new Secretary of Education. Because people really look, if you look at your consumer practices in the stores or anything else that you pick, it's, it can be word of mouth, it can be just your preferences. And what's disconcerting, and it's so good to get feedback from all of you when you do hear things, we ask the principals to try to pick up on and ask when we have parents that say, if you don't offer this program, we'll be looking for it somewhere else. And, but we're small, so we can't accommodate everything. But it's disconcerting to us, because when you look at academic programming, and we've just been named the International Small School District of the Year in Advanced Placement. Well, that was last year in 2016, you know? We did all of that, well, it's a, it's a national, but when I'm looking at it is, I'm looking at that, when I was out in New York, and thank you all for encouraging me to go, I sat at the table, and I looked at things, and that is a really big deal. They were really probing our data, and they're saying, not only are you really doing well in AP, but you're doing well with kids, we are interested in attracting into these programs. And that's the magic when we talk about diversity here, is that we're not just doing it with one segment of the population, we are doing it cross-culturally for many, many students, and we have that scaffolding. And so it's really hard when you, when you ask for scientific data, and that's something that we're noodling over, is like, when you have that, and you try to promote that, there's criticism that, well, really, what is that award from some parts? So it's hard, do you promote awards or not? How, what's appropriate? And how do you inform the community about just the significance of some of the things that we are actually doing? One last thing I want to say is that, not with the current superintendent, Noka Hanipan, but the previous one, when we were first enrolling our AP program, he came down for a site visit, and the soups were out, and he took a look at the amount of offerings in our advanced placement program that we have here, and he goes, I don't know how you do this for a small school district, you have more advanced placement offerings in this school district than we do in Anoka right now. And when you look at the scale and the size of that, sometimes it's like, we try to get that word out, but we don't, it's not necessarily heard, or people may not be interested in it until they're really interested in it, I don't know. So you as board members, because you each have stakeholders that you hear from, if you wanted to noodle over a little bit of what's too much in the promotion department, and what's not enough, and what you're hearing, we'll take those trails and look at it, because we spend a fair amount of time discussing this, both at the director level and with the admin team, because we do want to retain our own residents. And I've always said that since I've been superintendent, we, it's nice to have other people come here, but we'd really like our resident students to attend. But since I've come here in 1998, we have seen choice moving in all directions. And, and it's a preferred, it's a preferred, what do I want to say? By our legislature and by our governors in the past, since Rudy Purbridge, choice has been on the table as let people, let people have the choice. And so we're noodling on it, and I guess my request is really, is a plea, actually, is if you come across things, or as you look at this data, and you have some insights, please share that with us, so that we can give that feedback back to principals and to, and to either improve or change, or build upon some of our practices, because you make perfect sense with that. Thank you.
I just wanted to, maybe it's stating the obvious, but I jotted down the top three from your survey and the top three from Springstead, and they're kind of, I mean, they're not exactly the same, but, you know, they're kind of triangulating what we're looking at here, high academic standards, positive school climate, quality of teaching, and then quality of teaching, safety, academic programs. And a lot of wonderful things are happening, but there's always room for growth. And then we want to make sure that the perception is in line, so there isn't that gap. And the biggest way to do that, the best way to do that is to communicate it. So we should all be thinking about ways to do that more effectively, and still simultaneously keep improving what we're doing, because sky's the limit, we can do better, we can always do better.
We can always do better, you're exactly right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
It was a ton of work.
Thank you so much. It really is fun.
Is information regarding the facility bond referendum?
Well, John, can I say one more thing? While Bill is walking through, while he's walking up, I know, I wanted to say one other thing, because I know that the board wants to noodle and have some more conversations about the walk zones in the district and the transportation. And that is a decision that really rests with the board. And so we will have more information on that. it goes, and we'll try it. It does come at, unless somebody improves the cross subsidy this year, which we hope you do, legislature, it's going to come at some cost to programs and FTE. We're just, we're looking for some guidance from the board on what direction to go on that. And I know Bill always tells me it needs to be sooner rather than later because if we're going to really give you a budget that's realistic and still be able to look for those efficiencies, these are decisions that need to be made probably sooner rather than later because once we're set with the timelines for staffing and program reductions, then we have no place to go but further down in the fund balance. And so I just wanted to put that out on the table because I know it's on the minds of people around the table and staff is waiting for some guidance in that area. So just putting that out for you to think a little bit more about.
Is that a noodle or discuss sort of thing?
That's a, you can noodle on it, you can put it on as an agenda item and upcoming.
Okay.
Either.
Can we just do that at this time, put it on the February work session?
You can do anything you want if the chair allows. I always bow to the chair.
I just think that might let us move along for tonight.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying let us talk about it now, but I think that we could put that on. And then if you want to noodle on it and give us some insights, because I know Bill, I'm not going to speak necessarily all the time for him, but I know that he has had many conversations with me and saying, if we're going to do this in some kind of a budget fashion, we need to know what the ask is. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair, log in members of the board. Superintendent Kelly. We're going to tonight talk about, I mean, we've had different pieces. We've talked about a possible facilities bond referendum. And we talked a little bit last week at the work session on pieces at the high school. And tonight, we're just going to kind of give you an overview of all the pieces that we've talked about. So some will be a review for some people, but for some people it won't be. Again, we are really here to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. In this situation, we're really talking about our facilities, our buildings, and of course, community, maybe look at our core values. To go back to the community survey that was done just about a year ago, it was springtime of last year. Do you remember? We had potential improvements in North Park Elementary School came back at sixty-six point seven as likely support to work on those improvements. And actually, the questions, there was like five or six different questions talking about specific pieces of that building. And what we did here is we put just an average together, but all of them were over fifty percent. And then the performing arts center here at the high school, we had a likely support there of seventy-three point seven percent. We talked about cost sensitivity in that survey. We looked at the average value at home of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And we looked at, you know, what happens if we would increase the taxes on that value of a home by fifty dollars? You see, we've had a sixty-four point four favorable result. If we looked at sixty dollars, it was at fifty-eight point five. And if it was at seventy dollars, you see, it was at fifty point four. And our standard deviation, there was eight points, if you remember where that's at. So, well, we kind of looked at that as like, well, really sixty dollars would probably go. So when we look forward to that, sixty dollars generates about fifteen million dollars. And when we looked at the North Park estimate of the remodeling project that was brought to you, that's a thirteen and a half million dollar ask. And then the PAC, remodeling over the PAC was at one point five million dollars. So that fits within that, fits within that sixty dollars, those two larger pieces.
And if you can remember from the survey that Springstead showed earlier, that one chart with the pink boxes and then the blue circle. So when they're talking about from the survey data, this is what the survey told us with the standard deviation, that's the pink box. And of course, the blue dot would be where we'd hope to be if it would actually go in front of the voters. So that's that information right there. So, you know, from that data, you can tell that they're very accurate with where those numbers are.
Okay, we're going to just go back to an overview of the needs over at North Park Elementary School. Really what, if you've been over there very many times, you know that the parking, parking lot's a problem over there. The playground is an issue and we'll look at some maps here in a minute. And again, we have the same things that we've been working on with the other buildings. You know, we have roofs, plumbing, windows, cabinetry. We need to be talking about moving that administration area to an entrance area. And the cost, if we would not do any remodeling over there, still the cost to work on that building in the next ten years is up there around nine million dollars. We have to find that money somehow to do these types of improvements at that building, even if we don't do a bond issue. Just wanted you to be aware of that.
I would like to interject at this point in time because we do have some newer board members that at the time for North Park, we could, what I call, harden the perimeters of all of our other buildings because of the way they were built, but North Park has a very specific design. And with the office being in the heart of the building, it was very, very hard for us to say that we could really secure that building the way the other ones were. We have tried very hard to do that, but one of the central things in looking at that plan was making sure safety and security, because it's been so heightened across the nation, that we have one point of entry where students can go in and out. If you think of the high school, our one point of entry is that door over there. And when you think of the facility here, we have one point of entry and it's that door. Everybody knows where it is at Highland. When you get to North Park, it gets really confusing. And because it's multi-level, when the architects were here, the board at the time and administration said, where could we put that administrative office so that we could have a single point of entry as well? And that takes up a fair amount of organizational change as far as the space within that facility. But yet, we feel we owe it to the students at that building to, although they're secure and we've put in security guards and we have locked it down, we would like it to look different over there for the sake of the students over in Southern Fridley. And so I just wanted to interject that because I know some of you, I'm boring you to tears, but for some of that might be new information.
Okay, we just want to just touch on, I mean, a little bit what you just talked about. The entrance right now for North Park Elementary School is where that small circle is. You know, issues we have there, if you've been there, especially when you're dropping off or picking up students in the afternoon, it's kind of a logjam on a daily basis. You see that the parking is on the other side of the.
Again, the parking.
You don't touch anything. You see that the parking is on the other, on the backside of the building or the far side of the building. So if someone comes and needs to park, then they do have to walk all the way around the building to come up to the top. The other piece that's a problem with the parking areas is you'll see that the bus drop-off area is the same place that we have our playground area. So when buses are coming in in the morning, it's very difficult for the kids to have a play area as the buses, you know, cycle in. And so we've taken a lot of space away from them when it comes to that. So we have some, you know, safety issues when it comes to the bus drop-off times.
And then like Superintendent Kelly talked about, safety concerns in the building, you can see in the center in the pink on that image is where the offices currently are, which is inside the interior of the building, or is in the center of the building. And then in this proposal that the board has seen before, it's moving the offices down below and creating a more of a, the same type of entry system that the other buildings have currently, which is a strong single point of entry with the offices on the perimeter to really be able to monitor the coming and going of the building. So this is something we've toyed with for a long time, like Superintendent Kelly said, on how we can really address this in this building.
Next, we could point out, if you look at that blue area, this is about the same square footage that we put on Highland and Valley View. We really talk about a incubator area for our kindergarten and our early childhood. So that part of the building would be bumped out a little bit on that side. And then also look in the middle, you see that yellow area, that's an area that would be expanded. If you've been in that cafeteria, you know that it's very, very small. They have actually the longest time to have lunch there because they get a lot less students in it. So they'd be able to expand the cafeteria area. And then you'll see towards the bottom there, that the one addition there of a brand-new gymnasium then for that building, to open up the inside space of that building.
And also in the pink, the music area, I think that's important as well. At Highland and Valley View, they have that separate larger room for music. And this design would give North Park that same type of space for music.
Then upstairs, on top of that blue area there, that's where we would build two learning studios for the fourth and fifth grade. You can see that on the far end of the building where the kindergarten rooms are now, that's where we would remodel and put in a science and an art designated room, just like we did both at Highland and Valley View Elementary School. And then new parking lot. The playground area would go to the backside of the building where the parking is now, separated. So there's not as many danger or safety issues for our students. And then we'd have, this new parking lot is actually bigger than we have now. So there's room for visitors to come and we'd be able to cycle cars in a lot easier. And you see on the, towards the middle of the image, you see there's space there for buses to come in and drop off. Where we would come in one side and actually exit out where we come in and out now. So we wouldn't have buses turning around. They would just come in, load, and leave. And it would be very clean-cut, drastic improvement from where we are right now.
And those familiar with the parking there now, you know that we expanded it into the playground area, put some barriers up to try to get the parking to the level it needed to be, but we couldn't get enough spots. We couldn't take enough playground area. So people still park on the streets, which creates problems. So this would create a sufficient parking space for everyone.
Can you talk about costs a little bit for that remodel then at North Park? We're looking at site work and playground work that are about six hundred fifty thousand. But the new construction where that bump out would be for both the kindergarten, early childhood, and then the studios, they're at three point two million. And what's really interesting is that three point two million, that's about what we paid for the other additions on the other buildings. And then the remodeling piece of the other, you know, moving the admin, adding that gymnasium, that's where we had that other three point eight. So again, we get down through those costs, you can see that it's right at thirteen, you know, thirteen four seventy-seven, you know, thirteen and a half million dollars. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the performing arts center we talked about last week, and we talked about being able to do that for one point five million dollars. That would include new seating, new lighting, sound system, a new stage floor, new curtains there, and then a ramp. And I'll just go to the next picture so you can see it. If you look at towards the bottom of the, actually, wait till we zoom in to the other picture. But the whole main area would get new seating. We would actually remodel the sound booth that we have upstairs right now and bring all the sound and lighting back up to that booth area and remodel that room. And then downstairs, we would get those seats back. When you look at, if anybody's walked up the steps in the PAC from the, down in the front, up around the side, up to the top, onto the stage, you know that on the side of the stairs, there's that big hole, you know? And that would be gone. The steps would go all the way to the wall. So a little bit of safety issue there. And I'll talk in a second about, well, I'll just go here now. Now we're into where the bottom of the picture was. This is the admin hallway where we would move the door that goes into the stage. Right now, if you go through the side door, up onto the stage, there's a very steep ramp there. We don't have any way to bring any type of ADA complacency there for anybody that's in a wheelchair to get them up onto the stage. So we would move the door down the hall a little ways, put a new door in and then ramp up to that stage. So that would be ADA compliant. The only negativity, or not negativity, but something that we would lose is inside the PAC, because of where the ramp comes out and where the steps then would go down to the seating area, the very front row there of five chairs, we would lose. We'd be gaining about ten to twelve chairs in the back, but we'd be losing five in the front.
And then gain in the back again is from the sound, the stuff that we set up in the back because the sound booth up above right now is just insufficient for what we need. So that's our gain back.
Okay, and we have some estimates then for the cost on this room. Construction cost, looking at approximately seven hundred sixty-five thousand. A new lighting, which would you want to touch on the lighting?
You know, I think when you look at the kind of the overall picture of what needs to be done with lighting, we're not talking about a few lights. You know, you have the house lighting, the stage lighting, the actual spotlights and color lights and performance lights, lights that need to move and the controls and programs for that. It's a very, very significant change. And you're talking about lighting that is ex-technology of older to new LED lighting and changing all the fixtures. And it's really a complete overhaul. And I think with the sound system, you kind of have the same thing. You know, you have your all-new sound boards and your connections and that whole new sound system, which again, currently is set up for every event down on the floor and then taken back down versus having a system where you walk into the room and you turn things on because the speakers are up above and, you know, a true performing arts space that, you know, we had before and over the years, it's just, you know, as things had stopped working, we've had an update. And the easiest way to update them is the way we're doing it currently. And we just need more significant funds to be able to replace. So if anybody's experienced neighboring districts' recent remodels and their performing arts centers, that's what we would be looking at, that type of major remodeling. And that includes a presentation system. That's kind of all one package, even though it's broken down.
Okay. Fees, this includes architectural fees, includes engineering fees, and of course, city permitting fees. And then we have a contingency built in until we actually get the bids, you know, we know exactly where we're at. These numbers we did though, we see from our engineers, we feel they're, you know, should be relatively close. So we're looking at, you know, one point five million as a total cost to go ahead and remodel that particular room in that particular building. Tax impact, we haven't talked about this for a while. Very temperamental this evening. Anyway, if you look at a hundred thousand dollar home, we're looking at fifty-five dollars a year. That's about four dollars and sixty cents on a monthly basis. Moving to a hundred fifty thousand, then at seventy-eight, and two hundred at a hundred and forty. When you look at the, our median home there, a hundred twenty-five thousand, then you'll see there that we're about a little over, you know, five dollars a month, which keeps us down within, under that sixty dollars, which ties back to our survey. So proposed facility bond referendum, we really see that the surveys, the community supports these projects. North Park Elementary needs upgrades and maintenance. This isn't something that we're coming and adding an extra. The high school performing center also needs some upgrading. And the costs fall within the parameters of the community survey. So for the possible facility bond referendum governance questions, we're really talking about if and what and when we might do that. And then what type of combination? So that's the questions that go back to you to discuss going forward.
So I am wondering, how many years would that tax impact the property owners if it passes?
These numbers that we received were at fifteen years.
Fifteen, okay.
Something else I was going to just add to throw in my two cents worth, just to remind the board, is that things have really changed in the state of Minnesota in that we were one of the first people to do all daycare, but now everybody's gone statewide. We are lucky enough to have. enough to have some of the facilities, and the board, in their wisdom, was wise enough to allow us to put on the two incubators. Now with the four-year-olds coming onboard, we still have some space in the buildings, because we freed up some classrooms, and the two we put the incubators on, that is not true at North Park, because the four-year-olds need little bathrooms, and we used to call them teeny-tiny toilets. But they really do need the facilities, and it's very hard to take those kids down the hall and to the right and then try to get them onto something bigger. And when talking to Principal Sosick, that was one of the things that he was reviewing with me when we were talking about, can we really expand a program over there? And they are full, they have 20 in the morning and 20 in the afternoon. So we feel that there is a need over there, but we really don't have the facilities. That's, that is one thing. The other thing, I'm going to speak to the high school for a second, in that when it comes to that PAC, I arrived here in 1998, they were just redoing it, and it was, it was beautiful. And it was like state-of-the-art at that time. It is about one of the only facilities in the community that is a performing arts facility. And so it's used by, in the summer, by our finance, our Fine Arts Foundation. It is, people like to use it for other kinds of events besides what we have going on. And when we did the calendar for the performing, of the performing arts, with our theater program growing and everything, it's hot all the time. And yet, it's always a struggle because the curtains are old, the floor needs work, the sound system is done. And I'm just going to be kind of candid with you all, is that some of our sound system, we actually import with one of our employees. When we really have something to go on, we have a wonderful Columbia Heights graduate who works for us, who brings in things to us at this point in time. The neighboring district, and it was in the paper, so I'm just going to say it, if you have, I'm going to be more candid, Brian, thank you for your discretion. Fredley figured this out a few years ago, and they have just updated their performing arts, and they opened it this last December, and they had their first, or it was November, had their first performance in there. And when I read about it in the paper, because I didn't go over to actually see it at this point in time, it's very similar to the kinds of things that we are thinking about doing. So it's, we're not trying to build, what do I want to say, the ordinary center for performing arts, but we really are trying to give the community a place to perform and to nest for band concerts, choir concerts, and theater, as, as, as well as individual stuff for our students as the curriculum unrolls. And that's, that's where we are with that. And I really want to thank the board, because when we saw this last fall, I believe it was, board members really urged us, was it last fall or was it last spring? I can't remember. It was last spring, to go out and do the research on this. That was a really wise decision for us, for the board to make for us, because it gave us a chance to really price out what that would be and what that would mean for our students. And for our students, it would mean quite a bit. That's all I have to say.
We're having discussions about this. I actually want to speak a little bit about North Park. We're looking at $9.3 million just in maintaining the building as it is. And from the way I understand it, as part of the remodeling project and making the space suit the program needs, that we would automatically be doing, we would be doing all that maintenance at that particular time. I mean, we would be replacing the windows with the remodel and so on.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're looking at, I mean, I guess it's probably not an apples-to-apples comparison, but about $4 million to get performing arts spaces and lunch line and, you know, and a cafeteria that works. I have heard that lunches run pretty much all day there.
They start, yeah, they start very early and they run later.
Yeah. And that some of the students were standing in line for, to get into the lunchroom, and that I find it to be fairly concerning. That's time that could be spent.
Definitely much longer than the other elementarys.
That there's time that could be spent learning. And the new, and the safety situation, my oldest children went to, went to North Park. My younger one, I moved, I stayed in the district, but I just moved in, further into the district. We used to actually, actually drop off in that horseshoe. And, and I've seen, yeah, it was just, it's just really not safe. I mean, even with bringing the buses down on the bottom, that was an improvement. And it's still not safe. I, I think this looks like, I guess I'm just going to lobby for that, it looks like a very good, a good use of our, we're going to have to do something over there. I'd rather get the stuff that meets the programming needs, like the learning studios. And it's the only school without a library, is that correct? And the library and the band room, or excuse me, the band storage room?
Right.
So it's a, it's a room that has books in it and all the band equipment. Okay. So I just wanted, I've taken numerous tours, but we really need to go over there and actually take a look at it as a board again.
And I think we're going to be doing that in February, because you asked if there could be a facility tour, and it's a choose-to, not a have-to, but I think, I wrote, I think I wrote about that in the last update, and we'll revisit that again. But there will be a facilities tour where we go from building to building, to building, to look at everything that we're doing. And we will certainly wind up, or be, North Park will be included in that as well.
I have a question. Are you able to put together for us just what the tax impact has been for this proposed referendum for the voters, as well as what we looked at in the last couple of years? So I know that we have the capital projects levy and the technology levy, and kind of what that increased for taxpayers in addition to this. So if we can kind of add those together and look at what the...
We can get the specifics out, but it was about the same amount. Because you remember, we are generating, over a 10-year period, we're generating $10 million.
Okay.
So it's a little less than we're talking about here.
I'm just looking at if we're, kind of just, we, like I said, we just had these, these previous levies. I'd like to see what, what the total is as we move forward over the next 10 years.
And we did a long-term chart of the levy in the district, and you have that from the last time of where the price went down for the charge to the, to the community, and then with the operating levy, and when that came on and what the price was. And we have that, and Bill's not...
Exactly, exactly.
But we have that.
We can sort of split out the total levy and look at what that impacts, that's what the impact exactly is, yes.
I think when you talk about the different levies, the operating levy was just a continuation, so there wasn't a tax change.
Correct.
Per se. There could have been, had we not passed.
Correct.
The taxes would have gone down. So the significant change, if there was one, would have been regarding the capital levy. And you're saying that the capital levy is same or similar to?
It's, it's very similar.
But shorter, less money over short, or shorter time.
It's a shorter period of time, yes.
Yep.
But I still, if Lauren's interested in the numbers, I would encourage that, we should be able, all of us.
Yeah, we can do that.
Impact as they overlap. Like, what years would overlap? When would it be concurrent? And when would it be on its own? And how does that look?
And I, and I also want to add that I think it's really important to go back to the charts, because the board did look at that, to see what we were doing, where we were at a point in time years ago, and where we are, where we were. And in hard times, the board even took one of the incubators and put it into the general fund to make sure that the taxpayers weren't overburdened when we were going through the big recession. So I think some of that history piece, I think we have this scheduled, again, for the work study, if I'm remembering correctly, in February. But we'll look at it in management team tomorrow, so that we can answer your questions and things, and also go back to that history piece that Brian is talking about as well.
Or if we just fixed the cross-subsidy policy problem, we could pay for it in three years, right?
Out of our general fund.
Yeah, out of the general.
Out of the general.
If we just fixed the cross-subsidy problem, then we, yeah, do you want me to just say it louder?
No, I really didn't.
Three years, you got a new North Park, right?
I guess one of the questions I would have, I'm going to throw, just for the sake of discussion, to help move this forward, you asked if, what, when. So if we decided that, yeah, this is a great idea, is the what, the money amount?
Yeah, well, yeah, the what's going to be, what, what pieces of this do you want to go into?
If we said, yeah, we want to do it, and it was North Park and the PAC, then the when piece would be, obviously, when it would go out to a vote. I guess, conversation about recommendations of when that would be best to do that. Are we looking at, you know, recommendations from staff to do that this year? Is that the thought?
I think the thought, yeah.
Yeah, well, the common thought really needs to come from the board.
I understand.
But what we were looking at, and so I want to paraphrase that, because I, there are some members of the community that want, really want to hear from the board on this, I'm sure. When we initially discussed this back last spring, a preference of the community and passports has been that we go out in the fall where it's well-known, that is where it's transparent, and where people really know that it's happening, that we're not doing this May 15th for some random, you know, thing. And I'm trying to answer that question that way. And so although, in looking at that, I am going to answer that question, it would probably be a good thing to be thinking about a fall date for this of the upcoming year, John. But in addition, one of the things we talked about at the work study, and John and I talked about before he left, was so that the board has another pulse point on how the community is doing. We can put ourselves in the queue with Springstead to do just a short survey, where it's not going to be about enrollment, it's not going to be about transportation or anything, but it really is, it really is a scientific survey, much like you saw Don talking about. And we could do that in March, and maybe get the results back to you by early April, so that before you really pull the pin on this thing, you have an informed dipstick one more time, so we're not going back to the past study, but an informed decision again on how community members are feeling about it.
Right, and I guess the intention of the questions I'm asking here is to get the board thinking, to make those decisions, that if that was the case, and it's a hypothetical developed by me, not anything other than that, the what being those two pieces, and the timing being sometimes as well. And that, I'm glad you mentioned the survey, because that's one of my questions, is it was done a year ago or last spring or whatever, how accurate is it? Are we, are we going to go for something, or maybe there's the, that pulse check is not what it was at the 58 to 66% last time, so.
And that's really an important thing for the board to have. And I've tentatively spoken to Springstead about that, but I don't want to commit to that survey until you really feel that you want that survey. So that's probably a governance question that I'd be asking you at the next time we bring this up, so we can, because there are many school districts that want to use them, and there's only so many hours in the day for them to make the calls and develop the surveys and things. So that would be a governance question that we'd probably bring to you the next time we discuss this. And if you decide you think you want that, then we would, we would commit to doing that survey.
Would it be at all possible for us to take a peek at the survey questions before they administer it?
Well, yes. What happens is, we look at, they, they're, they do surveys across the country, so they would put together what the possible sample questions would be. We would talk about it as a board and then give feedback. And then many times when we talk about it as a board and as an admin team, they'll come back and they say, if you ask that question this way, you're not going to get the results you need. So they, if they're going to guide the survey, they kind of give us some, some direction in that area, but yes, of course you would be able to. And then, and they're very specific when they say, you know, if we ask this question this way, you're not going to get the results that you want, and what is it that you really want. So it would be a pulse point that, that also is an indicator, just like we did with the other one, that what we asked before is what we're asking again. So we're getting the same kind of information.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want to appreciate the expertise that we're hiring to do the work. I don't want us to be in a situation where they're presenting the results and we're saying, but what if you had asked it that way? You know, I want us to know what we're paying them to do.
That's really good, and what we can do, and what Springstead usually does, is you can look at the other survey, the survey that we did in the spring, and then go through the questions. They will limit the questions. And sometimes, we, and I say the collective we in the room want to ask more questions, and they're saying, you need to really focus on this. But definitely, you can look at what we asked the last time and ask what you want to ask this time, and then get feedback from them.
So they plan to use the same one?
No, what they will do is, and I don't want to speak for them, because I don't know what you're all going to, what you're going to ask for. But they will, they will look at the questions that we asked the last time on which the results were presented. And they're saying, there may be some questions that are same or similar that we're going to want to ask again, to see that we're getting the appropriate pulse. There may be some that are different. And Don is very skillful, and if you let, let Springstead know what it is that you want to find out, that will inform you on whether the community is willing to go out for that vote. You saw the level of accuracy in the surveys, as far as where districts that they've worked with landed. He will get you the information. We might not like the results, or we might like the results, but he's very skillful at getting us, getting us, meaning the collective we, what we need in those, to make informed decisions for the board.
Yeah, actually, I do have a question. About doing the, the normal maintenance that we're going to be doing over the next 10 years, how would that be funded?
Well, at this, at this point, you know, we have three funding mechanisms for capital. We have capital dollars, we have the, the capital projects levy, and we have the long-term facility maintenance money. Going forward, over the next 10 years, we really don't have enough to do every single building with all those funding mechanisms. And that's one reason when we brought, we've brought projects forward the last couple of years, you'll see that not much, not much has been happening at North Park, because we're always thinking, well, we're going to do something with North Park. Now, also in this plan, though, the actual remodeling piece, there are some dollars that we've included in there that would be used out of those funding streams to do like the windows. So if the windows aren't included in that big, long list I gave you for the remodeling construction, we would do it at the same time, but it would come out of a different, it wouldn't be out of the bond itself. It would be out of the capital dollars that we have.
And if Tom Foley were here, he was saying, he does maintenance on that building every year, and he has this to prove it, yes. So I do, I do want to speak for him, because he always reminds me of that. But some of these projects are just so major, that we, we can't do them just with the dated, the year-to-year monies that we have. And it's because of aging buildings, too. It's just like where we are, age and stage with our buildings as well.
And it's such a strange configuration, built into the hill like that. It just creates some unique challenges.
The building itself and the grounds, because of flooding and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it floods down, or at least it used to, down by the, down at the bottom of the hill, that would turn into a swamp.
Still does, yeah.
Still does, yeah. Because it would be a great place for a playground if it didn't swamp.
So moving forward, you talk, you talking about some type of facility?
We are. We're planning on, and I'll, I will talk more about this at management, but I think we have a date. Don, did we set a date for that or not? I'm, the 7th of February, yes. And the times, do you remember off the top of your head? I think we are starting at 3:00 and going forward. We're just proposing that because it's from 3:00, and we would van together and have Tom Foley and other people, and have principals meet us at the site, so that you could actually see what is going on. The last time we did this, the board really enjoyed it, from the standpoint of getting out, and Tom Foley loves to talk about his buildings. And, and so what we find, though, in order to make all of them at once, is so that you can have means of comparison and go through the plan, it takes a little bit more time, because you have, you have questions when you get in the building. And so we've picked that date. It is a choose-to, rather than a have-to. And then I think in February, what we had thought is we would have an informal conversation with you at the work study again about that. And then that'll give you a chance to think. And, and so the facility tour would occur before. And then our work study, what is that, on the 21st? So we'd really devote a lot more time in February to this particular governance question.
We have a time on that facilities tour?
Three.
Three. You probably said it, but we missed this side of the table.
Yeah, that was February 7th.
Yes. And we'd meet here, and then we would just tour. We're doing them all. That, it's just like we did the last time, because we, some people have questions about what are we doing with our capital plan, and what's going on in the buildings, and then what needs to be done in the building, so that you can forecast. And so we don't talk about anything else. We just talk, we won't talk to you about academic programming that day at all. We'll just talk facilities. And it's concentrated enough that by the time you get done, you get a real sense of where we are in the district with our... where we are in the district with our facilities, at least as we've been, what we've been told by pass boards that have done the tour.
Any additional questions? If I am to make any referendum. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Transportation update.
Tonight, we'll give you a update on transportation. There's been some questions raised the last few weeks, on some things. I've, I've put together some information on that, and then we'll talk again about the walking areas and what those actually cost, when we think about changing. Again, we're here. Our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner here in Columbia Heights, and our core values. And we're talking about transportation that definitely is a community in excellence. We want to do a very good job for our students as we transport them into school. So I just kind of made a little list of facts, so things that we've looked at here the last couple of weeks. One thing, there was a question on routes, you know, how long are they, how long do they take? And from what we've planned a route to be, our average route actually gets done eight minutes earlier than we planned them to be done. Of course, that's not true every single day, because we get a sub-driver once in a while, or we get a snowstorm, or whatever we get, we get some later days. But our average route time, and this is all routes, so it's all the routes down into Minneapolis, is an hour and eight minutes. Our shortest route is at 45 minutes. Of course, that's pretty local. Our longest route is an hour and 28 minutes. And really, the reason that some of these are a little longer, really shuttling students increases our route time. So what's happened, when a lot of us, the students that come from Minneapolis, you know, they, they don't just all go to one school. We have, we have some Minneapolis kids in Valley View, we got some in Highland, we got some in, in North Park. So what happens is, when it's time to go home in the afternoon, North Park loads up their students, and then they drive over here to Highland. So any, any kids that need to go to North Minneapolis have to then get on the North Minneapolis bus coming from North Park, then they leave and they go down to Valley View. So the kids at Valley View that go down into Minneapolis are sitting in the gym for 20 minutes waiting for those buses. So that's the reason that these routes are, you know, longer, they're over an hour. And you have, you see, the longest one here is an hour and 28 minutes, but 20 minutes of that is shuttling students from elementary to elementary, until we get our buses ready to go to Minneapolis. Because we can't afford to run the same, I mean, three buses down the same street, because we have students on the same street in three different school buildings. And that's really part of our, part of our problem, we talk about the length of our route down into Minneapolis. Right now, our walking distances for, for our district is the elementary's at three-quarters of a mile, and the secondary, or the middle school and the high school is a mile and a quarter. This is really hard to see, but it gives you a, a little bit of an idea of our walking area, and you, and, you know, a mile, a mile and a quarter, I mean, that's kind of a long, you know, I'd say it's kind of a long way. So there's a lot of walkers when we look at our district. One reason that we see a lot of cars come into the buildings in the morning, because a lot of kids are getting rides, where, you know, years ago, you know, our buildings weren't, weren't built, or our driveways, or our parking lots weren't built to have, you know, hundreds of cars come drop off students in the morning. Either kids walked, or they drove the bus. You really didn't get many, many rides back in 1960s, yeah. So at Highland, if we really look at Highland, you know, what, what's it look like if we change that by a quarter mile, and change it from three-quarter to a half a mile for the walking area? Right now, we have 143 walkers over Highland Elementary School, and if we would change it to a half mile, then we would only have 28 walkers. So it's an increase of 115 riders, of course, I'll need two buses to move that many students. This is an example of what, you know, pretty close to what the walking distance would move from the black line to the blue line. We had to do a little more work on that before we had finalized something, but that's just an example. So it's actually quite a big movement for that building. When we look at Valley View Elementary School, right now, we have 157 walkers, and if by moving that a quarter mile, that would drop that down, down to 76 walkers, an increase of 81 riders. And of course, I can't put them all on one bus, so we're talking about two buses there also. Again, it's an example of what that walking distance would change to from the blue line down to the red. When we look at the North Park Elementary, their walking area is quite a bit smaller already, because of the way it butts up against the freeway. So their current walkers are 25. I know we talked about this earlier today, that I think we only have one or maybe zero walkers, that's because everybody drives their student to school. There are technically 25 walkers. But in this situation, by changing from the three-quarters to half, it actually remains the same, because that, that's already down to a half mile. So we have no buses that would change, or any more riders for buses at Valley View Elementary School. You can see how it butts up against the freeway. It's actually a pretty small walking area already. Okay, let's move over to Columbia Academy. Right now, we have a current walkers of 330 students. By moving that, well, a quarter mile from a mile and a quarter down to a mile, the walkers would drop to 239, so it's 91 riders. Of course, I need two buses to do that. Again, a small decrease in the walk area. When we look at the high school, right now, we have 319 walkers. By moving that down to a mile, I'm sorry, that's a misprint, that's mile, I don't mean a half mile, that's 191 students still walking, so it's an increase of 128 riders. So I can do that with two buses again. I guess the positive thing, if, looking at this situation, is not really adding four buses, we have two tiers, so we're actually only adding four for the district. Example of the high school walking area. So just kind of put all this together, Highland, we would need two, two more buses, moving 115 students. North Park, we wouldn't see a change. Valley View, we need 81 more students on the buses, so that's two more buses. Columbia Academy, 91 students, we would need two buses there. And the high school, two buses with 128 students. Of course, that'd be pretty full for them, but I'm only going to give them two buses. So, it's, yeah, here. Okay, so we got two buses. Just kind of work down through here. You can see that the, the four routes, the cost of putting on four more routes is $180,000. Right now, our cost for one route for a school year is $45,000. So you can see that we would have to cut three FTE somewhere in order to pay for that, because we don't have any excess in our budget right now, going forward. And we talked about it more last week, just talking about the budget going forward, and the cuts that we already have to do, just to balance the budget. But this would be an, an increase of another $180,000. Okay, we did look at, well, what happens if we just transport everybody? So I know there was certainly talk about that, to try to, you know, have people, you know, stay in our district and so forth. So there you see that at elementary, we have to get the whole 143 students, that's three, three buses now instead of two. At North Park Elementary, we, there was enough, there's enough room on a couple buses that we can pick up those 25 when they're coming into the, into the school area. Valley View, we're looking at three buses there again, and actually, at Columbia Academy High School, actually quite a larger number, where we're actually have to look at five, five vehicles at each place. So that's a 10, 10 routes, with a cost of $450,000, $450,000. So a true seven FTE fine somewhere, in order to cover those kind of dollars. So this just kind of gives you an overview of the cost of changing, some busing, and what's kind of happening right now. We're kind of getting redundant here, I'm sorry about that. But again, to move a quarter mile, we need four buses at 180,000, or three FTE, I'm sorry. And then to transport all students, we're looking at 10, 10 vehicles, with a cost of $450,000. And of course, a loss of seven FTE, for sure. With that, is there any questions? Excuse me.
Doesn't sound like it at this point, Bill.
Okay, thank you so much.
If it pleases the board, we can do this PowerPoint in the update, so you have it, because I'm seeing some of you taking notes, and I'm, to noodle on it. Bill, if you would, just give it to John, and then we'll put it in the update.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Next up is review of policy 807, health and safety.
There, there isn't a lot of other policies that we're looking at reviewing at this time, but the health and safety policy is a policy that MDE requires us to at least review on a yearly basis. And I know there's, there's not a, not a policy committee, meeting coming up in the next short period. So this is something I need to bring to the board to, to, you know, take action, or to review this policy, so that we can have our long-term facility maintenance revenue funding. So that's why we bring it to you tonight. There is no changes to it whatsoever, word for word, will remain the same.
You don't have any concerns or anything with the policy, do you, at this time?
No, I, I, no, I don't. MDE just says, we have to see a motion that the board reviewed it, and so that's what this is about.
And just for clarification, because there's not, probably going to be a ton of discussion here, our policies are reviewed by staff, and legislative changes, NSB changes, things. If there was something that needed to be changed, they would be the, that'd be the conversations we would need to have. When we do our policy committee, and, you know, some of you have been able to experience that, is, it was not a, it just needs to be listed as reviewed, but because of the mandate, we need to actually vote on it, correct?
Correct.
With that being said, it's, again, it's available online as well, but if anyone wants to go back and peek at it, have questions when it comes forward, or even probably actually before it comes forward, reach out to the superintendent.
And then the governance question on this is, we would bring it back to you for action at the next meeting.
That's right. If you take the time to review and you ask specific questions prior to coming back, or when it does, either one, but you tell us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Moving on, action items, discontinuance of programs and positions. I'll have Lindsay do a brief introduction of this, and then there's a resolution for this, so I'll do as I have with the others, which is when she's done introducing, ask her motion second, read the resolution, and then any discussion that we need to have with the board.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. As presented last week at the work session, this is an annual resolution we bring forward. It directs the superintendent administration to start looking at ways to reduce expenditures, discontinue certain programs, curtail certain programs, discontinuance of positions, curtailment of positions, in order to help balance the budget. Like I said, it is an annual resolution, it starts the staffing process, and it was discussed last week, so tonight we bring it forward for approval.
I'll start with a motion to move this forward.
Tom moved.
Laura?
Second.
And I'll read the resolution. Board of Education Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and reasons therefore. Whereas the cost of special, special education has increased by 47% over the last five years, neither the federal and state have recognized their full obligations for funding in this area. And whereas the special education cross-subsidy has grown over the last five years from $4,45,112 to $4,697,707, necessitating that the amount of the school district's general fund needed to cover the obligation has increased to 10% of the general fund budget. And whereas the financial condition of the school district is dependent on federal, state, and local revenues, and these have not been sufficient to cover the total cost of ownership for school district expenses. And whereas a school district has an obligation to balance the budget on an annual basis. And whereas reductions in expenditures and school finances must include discontinuance of positions, and discontinuance or curtailment of programs. And whereas a determination must be made as to which faculty and staff contracts and programs must be terminated and not renewed, and which licensed staff may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District on the 13th, Columbia Heights, hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions. To effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, make recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions, in order to balance the school, school district budget. Discussion. Hearing none, must be a resolution, so it's a roll call, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Osamore?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up would be the bids for the repiping of the high school water lines. Bill?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Two weeks ago, I, I brought the information to the board as an information item, for bids for our domestic cold water line in the high school. If you remember, this is something that we had brought forward during the time when we were advertising to go out for the Capital Projects Levy. I think I passed a pipe round at one point, or you could not see through it, so we're having trouble moving some water, and we're continuing to getting, getting leaks in the high school. So that's why we're moving ahead with this project. You see, in your packet, there is a recommendation letter from our engineering firm, Hallberg. They've been working with us to put this project together. And tonight, I asked that we would give, give the contract to NAC. They are our lowest bidder on this project, and we would do that right away this summer, as soon as, as soon as school is, is out. I'm going to take it back, it's not right when school is out, it's actually after Summer Academy is done.
Would that be ready to go, then, by the time series?
Well, actually, what we're going to do is, we're going to actually lay a lot of new pipe earlier, because lots of it's down in the basement area. So there will be work going on during Summer Academy, but it won't be interrupting anything. What, the new main valve will be put in the week of July 4th, that'll be the week the Summer Academy's over, and before we start summer school, because there will be a few days where there will be no water in the building. But once that new main is in, then we'll start tying the new areas onto the piping that was put in place. So it'll take the rest of summer to take care of that, but we don't have any reservations that wouldn't be done by the time school starts again. I guess just one more thing to say to it, this is, this is two-thirds of the high school, and we will be coming back for the other third at a later time.
Can we start with a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion. Just for clarification, Bill, this project, I'm reading here, it's funded, we're using both capital levy dollars as well as long-term facility maintenance dollars, correct?
That is correct. The way we had split up the, the dollars this year, we'll be bringing another project to you at the middle school, and that will be windows. If you remember, a few years ago, we did put new windows in the north side of that building, when we did that whole new drive, but the rest of that building still needs windows. So there's a plan to do the windows in that building, which would be all Capital Projects Levy, and then the remainder of those dollars that are available will go to this project, and then the long-term facility maintenance dollars will finish up the project.
And for a point of clarification, too, the, the bid for this project is under budget? Is that correct, for the plumbing?
Yes, we were actually very pleased with, with where this came out. That's why we're going, we, we thought we'd have to go a third of the building at a time, and we're actually be able to do two-thirds. So, yeah, we're actually over $100,000 less than we thought it would be with the first initial, you know, estimate.
Just noting that we, you also got six bids on all, on all the alternatives and everything. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, we always feel very glad we get over four, and this time, we got six.
Six is.
So there's definitely interest in the project, and it helps bring the cost down.
Hearing nothing further, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion paused. You don't get to go away at this, though.
Yeah, we got one more. Yeah, we'll get one more.
Next up is the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen revised budget.
Um, again, we went through, uh, the budget two weeks ago at the first, uh, which is the second meeting in, in January, so I think I'm just gonna, the, this handout is in your packet, I just, I'm just gonna, um, highlight a few areas, um, excuse me, first of all, in our unassigned, um, area, we do have a bu, a balanced budget, um, what, what we do when we look at the, uh, the revised budget, we really look, we go back and, you know, back in, back in, uh, June, when we brought the budget to you, you know, we don't know for sure who we've hired at that point in time, it's our best guess at that time, and most, that's what really a budget is, it's our best guess at that time period of what's going to happen with our finances, um, but now we do know who we've hired, we know what we're paying them, um, so we've been able to adjust all of the, uh, salary amounts, um, and we've been able to take some, make some adjustments to, as you know, um, special education's costing us a, a few more dollars, not necessarily on the expenditure side, but, um, our tuition side, so it's lowering our revenue going in, so we've made those adjustments. So with all that being done, we still have a balanced budget, actually a small excess that you see there of a seventeen thousand, um, because of the health and safety rollover, our, we're getting caught up through the levy of our health and safety dollars, so you can see the actual, the actual overall general fund balance, we should see an increase of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, um, in our fund balance for this year, so I feel very good about that. Um, to point out, when you look farther down the line, you look at the building fund, the debt service fund, you'll see some negative numbers there, and both of those are, are parts of the levy where we actually under-levy, because there was excess funds, in the building fund, those are excess funds when we did the additions, um, most of this is coming from Highland Elementary School, um, where we were quite a bit under budget that year, which turned out very well, but we are giving back to the taxpayers that five hundred thousand dollars, so that's, that's why it looks like we're overspending, but we're just bringing in less money and still spending the same amount, is what's happening, and that money's gone back to the taxpayer, and the same thing's happening in debt service. If you remember, every year, we can levy a hundred and five percent to make sure we have enough dollars to make our debt service payments, um, and we, we do this on a regular basis, but as, we don't need that full hundred and five on a yearly basis, though, that fund builds up a little bit, it gets up to a point, and then we give those dollars back again, so you see that a hundred and fifty-two thousand there, too, is going back to our taxpayers, and it keeps our, if you think back a year ago, you know, levy kind of, we do the levy, but it's not till the school year after, you remember, we had a really nice levy, um, ball back, so, these adjustments were, were net levy, um, so the good news is, um, we're giving some money back to our taxpayers, and, uh, the general fund, we should see an increase in that fund balance this year when we get to June.
Start with a motion, move that forward.
So moved.
Paulson?
Second.
Laura? Uh, discussion of questions for Bill. All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, last action item is second reading of, uh, board policies, nine oh five, uh, advertising this policy appeared on the January tenth meeting, for first reading, and my understanding is, is that, uh, at least inquiries or questions from, uh, the public, there's been none regarding this policy.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions or comments about it? Okay, we're looking for a motion to move it forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Maddie? Any discussion of questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. All right, next up is board topics, anybody who, who wants for board topics before we close tonight?
I saw on social media that the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters challenged the school board to the polar plunge on Saturday morning.
I didn't see that.
Um, I don't know if that's, who wants to jump in a frozen lake on Saturday morning? Anybody? I'm gonna.
Is it going to be frozen?
Well, they, they cut a hole in it.
Round it.
And then you jump into.
Oh, I was, I'm wondering.
Can you walk on it? I'm sure they'll make it safe.
Too, Maddie, but I'll be working there.
Oh, oh, so you're doing safety.
Already, it's all about safety.
Maddie, I'll, I'll jump in the lake with you.
You want to jump in the lake with me?
I'll jump in the lake with you.
All right, apparently, you just register, and then you show up and you meet your friends, and.
It could cost you forty bucks.
If anyone watching this at ten o'clock at night would like to join us and rep for Columbia Heights Schools, any directors, maybe?
Okay.
Potential future interim directors, look at her.
That's, uh, for the, the general public, if this gets posted before Saturday, it's a Columbia Heights Fire and Ice Plunge, and it's, uh, a fundraiser to raise money for SECA, and if you're interested, you can, they'll, they'll take anybody to jump, I believe last year it was, uh, forty dollars to register, and that's your donation.
All proceeds go to SECA, too.
Yeah, so.
One hundred percent. You get to jump for forty dollars.
You need somebody forty dollars to jump.
So you can torture yourself for fifteen seconds, right?
It's really not that cold, though.
I don't believe you, but I'll tell you after I do it.
I'll be, Maddie, I'll be there, I'll say it'll be fine, just jump.
Who will have the wetsuit on, though?
That would be me.
Okay.
Point of clarification.
Any extras floating around?
Can't let the boosters down.
We can't let the boosters down, they have a contingency right now, so.
Um, I, I, bringing up the boosters' notation, the, going back to the, the resolution for the money that was, was given to us tonight, now, everyone is obviously extremely generous, but in reading through that, the boosters, um, you know, will once again continue to be a strong supporter, so, um, that's why I'll be there in the water, helping them. Anyway, I have any other board topics? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at nine fifty-nine.